Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is now officially called to order on Tuesday, June 13th at 7:05 PM. Trustees present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Newhouse, and Trustee McDaniel. I'd like to ask everyone to please silence their cellphones or any electronic devices at this time. Thank you. At this time, the Vice President and Board Equity Committee Lead, Winford Adams Jr., will begin the meeting by reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social-emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Tonight's Presentation of Colors will be led by the Westfield Mustang Army JROTC. The pledges will be led by Westfield Mustang Cadet Battalion Commander, Cadet Captain Neialia Colerius. The Color Guard Commander carrying the US flag is Cadet Captain Neialia Colosa. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Sergeant First Class Natalia Cotterius. Left rifle is Cadet Private First Class Angie Martinez. Right rifle is Cadet First Lieutenant Desiree Seti. The Westfield Mustang Army JROTC is led by Lieutenant Colonel Jacqueline Guillory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and
If everyone could still stand for a few more minutes to reckon for a moment of silence to use in your own way. I'd like to state for the record that Trustee Kelly P. Hodges joined us at 7:09 PM. Our next item is our Superintendent Remarks, so at this time, we'll hear from our super proud Superintendent, Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, President Durant and members of the board, and everyone that is here tonight. Thank you so much for coming out. It is definitely an exciting evening for us when we have all of our students and community members and principals in the audience. Bienvenidos a todos los padres que están aquí de parte de nuestra mesa directiva. Les estoy diciendo que estamos muy felices y orgullosos cuando vemos tanta gente que está aquí apoyando al distrito. So, to kick off the month of June, we celebrated graduation. And I just have to keep reliving that amazing weekend where, you know, we had six graduating classes. And so, I shared with you on Thursday some of the work that our amazing communications team has been putting together. And I know over the weekend, I think I texted you all this, but just want to share one more time this amazing video about one of our over 2,000 graduates from Spring ISD. So, I'm going to ask Mr. King to please play the video for us.
Thomas Alberto Sines. My name is Thomas Sines, and I'm a senior at Carl Winche Senior High School. And my main journey throughout the few years that I've been here is getting to the Air Force Academy. And ever since eighth grade, I've been working towards that. And everything I've done in my life has been working towards the academy so I can accomplish my dream of being a fighter pilot. It's definitely not an easy journey. Getting into the Air Force Academy is a whole menagerie of trials that you have to go through, from doing good in school to doing good outside of school to even your physical fitness. There are a lot of nights where dirt is up at 3:00 in the morning, working like crazy on an assignment, hoping and praying that you'll get an A, so that way you'll get a good grade on this report card, and then the academy will see that on your transcript. It's a lot of struggling. You can't take anything for granted. You almost have to fight for every inch. But the academy will see that. They'll see every ounce of effort you put into everything you do because they ask for everything about you. So, the Systems Engineering Pathway, we essentially study a plethora of engineering jobs. We've studied being aerospace engineers, chemical engineers, electric engineers, and there's a lot of presentations we do about it as well. So, not only are we learning about a future, a future in the STEM industry with a career and all and being an engineer, we're also learning how to be more confident and present and all. Because pretty much every week, we had a presentation to do of some kind, where we got up in front of everyone and the teacher while being graded and had to present a presentation that we made from the ground up.
We always ask teachers to make things real world. And so, when we go to classrooms, and you'll see teachers doing presentations, having kids do presentations, and then those things turn into opportunities for them to interview and actually use those same skills when they interview for positions and when they go out into the real world to try different things. We see that, and you can go to any pathway and see that same level of excellence.
You'll learn to be confident. The teachers, the community here at Winche, and even my friends too, helping me keep a smile on my face and keeping me laughing and smiling through it. Everyone played a huge part. It was a team effort to get in.
So, that's just one of our seniors, one of our graduates. I do want to recognize, way in the back, we have Dr. James, our principal at Winche, Carl Winche Senior High School. Thank you for your service and your leadership, Dr. James. And, you know, we started out with Momentum, our very first graduating class of 137, 27 students that graduated. And we heard from Gabriela, Gabriela Mireles, who wouldn't have had this opportunity. And she actually graduated ahead of her class, but she had gone through an injury she suffered playing her favorite sport, actually a traumatic brain injury, and was struggling in a big comprehensive high school. Heard about Momentum, came to Momentum, and did amazingly well. And we hung on every word as she was sharing her story. And then we concluded the evening, or the whole weekend, with Spring High School and their graduates. And we all heard from Zanaya Wheeler. And I'm looking back there because she should be in the audience. Zanaya, please stand. I know your mom's here. Mrs. Wheeler, Mom, will you also stand? I know I saw you out in the hallway. Where is she? No, she was running that way. But, Zanaya, please, if you'll stand. She is our valedictorian at Spring High School. And she is also an Emerge graduate. And I actually had the opportunity to be with all of our Emerge graduates last week. And she once again told her story and how, you know, her mom wanted her to go to another school. And she said, no. She had heard of a student that had graduated from Spring High School and was going to a selective college, and she said, I want to be her. And told her mom, I want to go to Spring High School, and I'm going to do that. And here she stands before us as the valedictorian of Spring High School through COVID and everything else, going through the Emerge program. Zanaya, remind me what college, what university you will be going to? University of Chicago.
I know you see the board smiling because your graduation valedictorian speech left us in tears. You did an amazing job.
And, you know, I shared that with her, and I shared it with the board last Thursday. But I want to once again read just a little tidbit of what touched. I know, you know, all the families and parents that were there and are aboard. And just a little bit of her speech, she said, "Every time they assume, we overcome. Today, I look out over the field, and I see hundreds of reasons why they are all wrong. We are not stereotypes based on the school that we attend. We are people with lessons to learn and life to live. But most importantly, we are Spring." Zanaya, we are Spring. And thank you for your inspiring words. And as you see the board here, and you see lots of administrators and teachers in the audience, our senior leadership team here, we are committed to making sure that every single student in Spring ISD has the best education and that they stand tall and proud when they say, "We are Spring." And we will continue to work tirelessly towards that. Zanaya, thank you. And just really quickly want to remind everyone, we do have our summer reading program that's on. It's animals around the world. I hope you all were able to catch Jessica Jackson, who is one of our specialists and is spearheading this program, this project from our academics, from our curriculum team. I hope you were able to catch her interview on Channel 39. She did an amazing job talking about the vision of Spring ISD and the importance of literacy and the importance of using literature, books, to be able to, you know, give students the opportunity to experience worlds and things that we wouldn't get to experience here at home. And so, our children in Spring ISD have an online resource with over 6,000 titles out there. Go to our website to see the interactive world map where you can learn more about the animals and the books that are out there. And last but not least, just letting everyone know, next week, our leaders from all of our campuses, teachers, principals, coaches, assistant principals, we will be involved in our annual Summer Leadership Institute. The theme for our Leadership Institute and for the rest of our school year, as we kick off our new school year, is the power of you. The work that needs to be done is found within this district, within our families, our students, our educators. It's about you, the power within you. And so, just excited to kick off another school year. I know we're closing one up right now, but we are ready to kick off our 23-24 school year focusing on you. It is within each one of us to make a difference in the lives of our students. President Durant, thank you for this opportunity to share with everyone here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. Next, I'd like to ask if any of the trustees would like to make any remarks at this time.
Well, I had an opportunity to have some fun. I went to Spring Girls' Softball Regional Playoff Games. And wow, our girls are good. Our girls are good. However, we had, I call it a brain fog. Now, coach may call it something else, but a little brain fog there. And we did not quite make it on into the finals, but they did an outstanding job in representing the Spring School District. Because I don't think people thought we were going to be there. And yes, we were playing the larger schools, and we showed up and showed out. So, hats off and congratulations to the Spring High School girls.
I just wanted to bring up something that was an aha moment for me. We've been complaining about how the state of Texas judges our school district by a single test is a great deal of our evaluation. And I've been trying to brainstorm other ways we could do this, and I realized I didn't have to do it. It's all here in our district. What you just mentioned with the athletics, we're going to be giving kids awards tonight for achievement in performing visual arts. We had an amazing speech from a valedictorian. And I just want to bring up a few other things that started appearing in the last month of the school year. I went to the Elementary Science Olympiad at Helen Majors Elementary. It was third through fifth graders, and those kids did just fantastic things. I guess the one thing I really was amazed at was one little girl had created a macaroni bridge that they could not break. They had a series of weights that they kept putting on the bridge, and her bridge went to the maximum weight. So, we have kids that are budding engineers, you know, by actually something they're making. Another thing was when we, the Asian Pacific Islander presentation, there were student projects, all kinds of things. Sometimes they were works of art, sometimes they were historical retrospectives and creative things. Our kids could be graded on those kinds of things. One of my favorite things I went to was the Bailey's Shark Tank. They had a creative way of doing vocational day. Instead of inviting people in of different occupations, they had the students create and pitch an idea, a business idea. And they had community members who were business people who were judging their ideas. I mean, this would be a wonderful product as well. And on top of that, I think we ought to be asking the students what kinds of outcomes they would like to be graded on. You know, at the Carl Winche Top 15% Breakfast, and they were identifying the teachers or the adults who'd made a real difference in their lives, those students are identifying people who really have an impact on lives. And I think then we can go to those teachers they've recommended and ask for more products. So, just a thought. We've got the talent, we've got the people in this district that can find other ways to evaluate our students other than tests.
So, this is June, so it's the month where we do the recognitions. I wanted to recognize a few folks that I have personally interacted with, starting with my Vine mentee, Mr. Amari Jackson, who graduated from high school at Spring High School this past week. So, I wanted to say congratulations to Amari. I also want to congratulate somebody that I've worked with for years at the Harris County Department of Education. She came into my office a couple of years ago, and I had recommended her for the ACE Committee and said she wanted to become a teacher. And she wanted some counsel on, you know, what she should do. So, she did the Alternative Certification Program at ACDE, and I found out at Momentum's graduation that she was selected as the Rookie Teacher of the Year at Momentum High School. That's Ms. Charlotte Manning, ladies and gentlemen. And so, I don't know if Charlotte is watching, but I just wanted to say how very proud I am of her and how grateful I am. She was a longtime parent. Her kids graduated from Decane High School. Her daughter graduated, I think, just the year before, and Charlotte went into that school and is teaching English to kids. And so, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. As we mentioned, this is June, which is a very busy month, especially with all the graduations, with all of the banquets and awards. It's one of the most rewarding parts of what we do. You know, we dedicate a lot of time, and we don't get any monetary payment, but we get rewarded when we see the accomplishments and the success of all of our students. And so, it's been, it's been a heartfelt month for me. It's been busy, because on top of that, we've also been elected by you, the community, to represent you specifically and primarily with the budget. And so, we are also in our budget process. And I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook, and her team, who has done an excellent job at guiding us through the budget process this month. And so, I just wanted to say thank you and to all my colleagues for all of the extra, extra, extra hours we put in in the month of June. Thank you. So, for our next item, I'd like to recognize Chief Strubart. I got it right, didn't I? Pronouncing names is not my strong suit, but I'm getting better. So, at this time, I'd like to ask the board and Dr. Inahosa to join me in the horseshoe
Dr. Jensen, Mark wants the name of that engineering student. He's got some projects for over in his department. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Inahosa, and everyone here in attendance and watching online. We begin tonight's recognitions with a spotlight honoring the work of students who took part last month in Spring ISD's first official Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Program. Students from across the district submitted entries, and winning projects were featured during a special program on May 30th, held right here in the Spring ISD boardroom, where students had an opportunity to present and be honored for their work. The overall theme for this year was advancing leaders through opportunity. And the contest recognized and encouraged writing, art, and oratory skills in students. The entries from elementary, middle, and high school students celebrated the accomplishments and contributions of people of Asian-American and Pacific Islander descent, both in contemporary society and culture and throughout our nation's history. The projects also highlighted the incredible diversity that is the hallmark of our vibrant community here in Spring ISD. A big shout out to all of the students, teachers, and staff who participated, including campus sponsors. Thanks also goes out to the Spring ISD Education Foundation and the OCA Asian-Pacific American Advocates Organization, which sent representatives to address our scholars and their families during the May 30th celebration. We're honored to have with us tonight several of the first-place winners from this year's contest. Students, when I call your name, please come up and shake hands with our trustees. In the K-2 Individual Division, from McNabb Elementary, Ana Maria Busti. In the Grade 3 through 5 Individual Winner category, from Eichenrow, Jasmine Rodriguez. And representing the Grades 3 through 5 Group Winning Team, Camila Oviedo and Jocelyn Baderas from Link Elementary. And an additional winner in the Grade 3 through 5 Group is, from Bailey Elementary, Casey Congratulations to all of our students and their parents and families, and to all the winners of this year's event. Next up, we're excited to showcase our district's participation in a worldwide event, the 2023 Jacobs Teen Innovation Challenge. The Jacobs Institute for Innovation in Education at the University of San Diego is a global studies project where students have the opportunity to create solutions to local and global problems. Representing Spring ISD, one team from Bailey Middle School and two teams from Duett Middle School chose one of the 17 United Nations global problems and competed through a digital submission process. Along with teams from Australia, Canada, Mexico, and the United States, on Friday, May 19th, it was announced that the Duett Middle School team, who chose the topic clean water and sanitation, were finalists in the 2023 Jacobs Team Innovation Challenge. This is the first time Spring ISD has participated in this worldwide event, and this is an awesome accomplishment. This evening, we present these Point of Pride recognitions to the three eighth-grade student finalists from Duett Middle School in this year's challenge. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. Next fall, Chase will attend Decane High School. Next fall, Chase will attend Decane High School, Juan will attend Spring High School, and Oscar will attend Spring Early College Academy. Special thanks to Do-It Middle School's... Special thanks to Do-It Middle School's Teen Innovation Coach, Dwana Hughes, and Do-It Middle School's Principal, Kimberly Doucette. Are they here? We would also like to recognize GT Specialist Christopher Sosa for his leadership in working with the Jacobs Teen Innovation Challenge. So Christopher, please rise. Congratulations. Let's give our winning team another round of applause. Next, we have a Point of Pride recognition for Decane High School's Hausian Saxophone Quartet, whose members took home a Bronze Award at the 2023 Bischoff National Chamber Music Competition, which was held at the University of Notre Dame in May. Decane's Hausian Quartet, who you probably remember from their incredible performance before the May Board Meeting, took third place overall in the Junior Win Division at this year's Bischoff National Competition. The annual competition dates back to 1973, when Joseph Bischoff and fellow members of the South Bend Chamber Music Society were looking for an innovative way to encourage young people to pursue chamber music study and performance. That first year, just six ensembles participated, but little did the society know that members would grow. Now, 50 years later, thousands of young musicians have taken part in the annual competition, representing states across the U.S., as well as more than 20 countries worldwide. Another worldwide competition. The Bischoff Competition has grown to become the largest and longest-running chamber music competition in the nation, with a reputation for hosting some of the finest student musicians in the world. By helping inspire and nurture a passion in students for the fine craft of chamber music, the event has helped launch professional careers while enhancing the lives and educations of thousands of student musicians. Congratulations to the quartet's very talented members. Members, when I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. They include rising seniors Joshua Allen, Diego Chapela Perez, and Angel Sanchez, and together with the Decane Class of 2020... Yeah, he's next. And Taylor Henry, who just graduated. Taylor just graduated, so congratulations. Congratulations also goes to Decane High School Head Band Director, Chase Giddings, on this very impressive win for Decane on the global competitive stage. Chase, are you here? And also Abraham Nunez, assistant coach. Can you come up?
All right, guys. All right, right here. Here we go, on three, one, two, three. Hang on just a second. All right, one more. On three, one, two, and three. Thank you.
Next up, we have a recognition for musical excellence that spans the entire district. For the 10th consecutive year, Spring ISD has been named among the country's best communities for music education by the NAMM Foundation, the philanthropic arm of the National Association of Music Merchants. The award, now in its 24th year, honors districts for their achievements in providing access to a quality music education for all students. In Vying for the Best Communities designation, districts answer detailed questions about their arts program funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making programs. Responses are buried and reviewed by the University of Kansas Music Research Institute. According to the NAMM Foundation, this year's awards celebrate innovative schools and districts that have developed a strong presence for music education on campuses and in the lives of students. We know that quality music education and instruction is a fundamental part of a well-rounded education. Spring ISD has a proud history of high achievement, both in music and across the performing and visual arts. And our current generation of Spring ISD PVA teachers, administrators, and students is no exception, as evidenced by this award, not to mention the Decane Band students who are just honored. It bears repeating that this is now 10 years running, a full decade, that Spring ISD has received this honor. Congratulations to our Performing and Visual Arts District Leaders, including PVA Director Dr. Joe Clark. Dr. Clark, would you please come forward? And, and, Assistant Director David Langreeb, as well as their fantastic choir band and general music teachers across Spring ISD. I understand we have a student that would like to say something?
This is the 10th consecutive year. Dr. Clark sends his greetings. He's at a conference in Indiana right now. So we are here tonight on his behalf, but this award is really about the students. So we do have two students who want to say something very briefly about this award tonight. I would like to ask Reyna Bullard and Zania Wheeler to come up and to make some brief remarks.
Hello, I'm Reyna Bullard, the Spring Brand President of the 2022 and 2023 School Year. If I was told that I'd be in this position when I was a measly freshman in high school, especially after falling on my face, I would have laughed so hard. But if I did not have those amazing teachers, the great foundation to show me to the right path, I know for a fact that I would not have been the great leader I was, or at least tried to be. I had been exposed to music all of my life, from my father banging on drums in church through my family union choir sessions, to being put in piano lessons in first grade. I knew from a young age that music would stick with me for the rest of my life. From middle school, I went to Twin Creeks, where I had amazing honor of meeting Ms. Carly Hood. She had so much passion for teaching young minds a skill that would never leave them, such as teaching me the basics of clarinet. Ms. Hood also never limited us to students. She knew what would be best for them, and I can contend to that. She introduced me to the bass clarinet, and later in high school, I made area band three times, as well as claiming a bronze medal in the first-ever UIL Ensemble Competition. Because of Ms. Hood's decision to upgrade my instrument, I have met many amazing musicians that also play the bass clarinet, that have given me life-changing advice, not just about my performance through my instrument, but through myself. I love my instrument, and I would not be the same person I am today if it wasn't for Ms. Hood, but paved my path in musicianship. Thank you, Spring ISD, for finding these amazing people who are so passionate to teach music and help students grow. Thank you, Spring ISD, for creating these environments where music can be learned and appreciated by students and teachers alike. Thank you, Spring ISD, for holding these music programs where students can find a refuge in the midst of the crazy life around us. Thank you, Spring ISD, for supporting us children as we express a very special part of ourselves. And thank you, Spring ISD, for giving me the opportunity to speak before you on behalf of the aspiring musicians in the wonderful school district.
Hi, I'm Zania Wheeler. I just wanted to say that I accept this award on behalf of all PVA students in Spring ISD, on behalf of all valedictorians and salutatorians who are also in band. I also accept this award on behalf of all the drum majors who have not yet stepped foot on the marching field, the students who have not yet chosen an instrument to play, and the ones picking up the recorders as we speak. I also accept this award on behalf of the school board members who have not yet to step in your shoes and bear the weight that no one could possibly imagine. My love for music and band started at Twin Creeks when I picked up the clarinet. I would have never expected myself to be where I am today, a former drum major with multiple honors and awards for music. But how could I when my first director was Ms. Hood, who went through the same band programs I did and was also a drum major? She is a testament to how our music education creates a passion that only we could understand, a passion that caused her to study music and become a director in the same halls that created her, and in turn influenced students like me. If you look within the community, this is a story that can be told hundreds of times with various students and educators, because Spring ISD's music education is overwhelmingly impactful. It touches many people within our district and stands out to those outside of it. We've created a thriving community that inspires and focuses on giving back, and one that we should all be incredibly proud of. Thank you.
Additionally, I would like to recognize a few teachers who are with us tonight. First of all, a Spring High School graduate who is teaching at Twin Creeks Middle School, Carly Hood. Please join us. So Carly taught both of these students. And Carly's band director is also here, our PVA Coordinator, Ms. Terry Clemmons. Please come join us. So... Terry taught Carly, who taught these students. And most of you know that I'm a Spring ISD graduate as well. So we are so thrilled about this. We also would like to invite up all of our other music staff members, our Arts Integration Coordinator, Mr. Johnny Williams, the Decane Band Directors, and our saxophone quintet for the photo shoot. Thank you.
All right, guys, right here. We ready? All right, right here on three, one, two, three. Hang on. Very good. We're gonna do one more. On three, one, two, three. Very good. Congratulations, guys.
Okay, next up, we have a special Spotlight recognition for Spring High School Girl Softball Coach, Ms. Julie Wirek. As of the 2022-2023 School Year, Coach Wirek has won more than 500 games just at Spring High School and more than 600 games over her coaching career. I think that deserves a round of applause. In addition, in addition, this season, the Lady Lions softball team won District Championship Number 7 and advanced to the UIL 6A Regional Quarterfinals. That's another round of applause, I think. And we have to point out, for in-district games, the Spring High School softball team has gone 88-0. There's more. All right, it's obvious that Coach Wirek goes above and beyond, serving as a coach, a mentor, and a role model for her Spring High School students. And she is also an inspiration for many throughout the district and the wider world of high school sports. Coach Wirek was also named the Spring ISD Coach of the Year during the Liftees Awards Ceremony hosted in May. So let's give her a round of applause. She is a respected member of the athletic coaching community and a real treasure to Spring High School, especially for her students. We have one more announcement for tonight. Mark is gonna help me out with this over here. Last year, the Board of Trustees approved the naming of the Spring High School Softball Field and is now gonna be called the Julie Wirek Softball Field. Tonight, we are unveiling the plaque here tonight. It weighs about 200 pounds, so I don't know... I don't know why they're trying to... This plaque will be ceremoniously mounted at the field this coming fall. So ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome Coach Wirek up to the front.
Look at that. Can you put it right here on the edge? Or is it too heavy?
There we go, okay. Hey, everyone, look at this big camera. All right, guys. All right, guys, right here, right here, on three. Here we go, one, two, three.
I would just like to say that these are four players. Two of them are graduated, two of them will just be sophomores, and they are the future of the program. But without these kids, none of this happens.
Yes, in the fall, we're gonna have... Yes, we will have an unveiling ceremony? Oh, yes, in the fall of this year, we will have an unveiling ceremony for Wirek Field, so we'll make that a public announcement. We just have to figure out how we're gonna mount that thing. We're not gonna make the building fall down. It's very heavy.
It's very heavy.
Thank you all so much. Bath in my knees. My better half in my knees. There's still the parents in the back I've seen. Thank you all. And again, without all of that, none of this happens. And without you all, none of this happens. I am tremendously grateful and honored. And I love Spring ISD. They didn't tell you this was my 23rd year at Spring High School, and I love what I do. So I'm the one that's lucky. You will make that promise. Oh, my goodness. Gracious.
Looks like it's from Indiana Jones. I don't know. Hundred percent. Okay. Our next spotlight shines a light on the achievements of BAML Elementary School Principal, Dr. Berkey Hernandez Obalabi. Dr. O, as she is known on campus, was recently awarded the Diana Garcia Marion Award by the Suburban Houston Association of Bilingual Educators, or SHABE. The award has been presented annually since 2001 to an individual who has made an outstanding impact on the education of emergent bilingual students here in the greater Houston region. This year's award went to Dr. O, who has exemplified leadership throughout her career in education, including her work as a bilingual teacher, assistant principal, principal, and district administrator. She has also served on the SHABE Board. SHABE? SHABE Board. SHABE Board. For the past 19 years and has led the planning of their annual banquet honoring area teachers. As noted, SHABE executives in presenting the award, Dr. O's parents are of Dominican and Cuban descent and moved to the United States for a better life for themselves and their family. She was the first in her family to attain a bachelor's degree and went on to become a bilingual elementary teacher and later an assistant principal and principal, all while taking graduate classes in her free time to earn her master's and her doctor degrees. Dr. O has built an excellent reputation around the Houston area for being a highly effective leader with emergent bilingual students and other student populations. Here in Spring ISD, her transformational leadership skills have made big impacts on our campuses. And last year, she led BAML Elementary in receiving a B rating from TEA. Dr. O is, that's right. Dr. O is never too busy to mentor those around her, and she's never lost her passion for the work of educating young people. We're excited to honor her tonight for receiving the Diana Garcia Marion Award this year. As many of you know, after 29 years in education, Dr. O is retiring as principal of BAML Elementary. We are so sad to see her leave. We were excited for her as she begins in her next phase and embarks on her retirement journey. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. O! Let's give her one more round of applause. Last but not least, this evening, we have a point of pride recognition for Anderson Elementary School Assistant Principal, Antoinette Clark, who was named Tepsin of the Year for Region Four by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. Each year, members from each Tepsa region honor a colleague for their outstanding service. And 20 school leaders from across the state were recently named Tepsins of the Year for 2023. Award recipients must be committed to advancing the principalship and the association as well as serving as a voice for Texas students. Honorees were formally recognized at the Tepsa Award Celebration on Wednesday, June 7th, at the Round Rock Kalahari Resort and Convention Center. Recipients of the award are all dedicated school leaders, hard at work, serving their communities and supporting classroom teachers. Tepsa's hallmark is educational leaders learning with and from each other. And the organization has served Texas pre-K through eighth grade school leaders since 1917. The organization has more than 6,000 members who direct the activities of more than 3 million Texas schoolchildren. A big congratulations to Miss Clark on being named Tepsin of the Year.
My work ethic. I spend so much time together. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the recognition. Tepsa is a wonderful organization that supports all of our elementary administrators. So having their acknowledgement of what we do and support, a lot like AFT supports our teachers.
Why don't we get the bottom of the book?
Good evening. We're reconvening at 8:11 PM. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, is there anyone signed up for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, not for agenda participation.
Then our next item is public participation. This portion of the meeting allows our public to present to the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under public participation?
Yes, Madam President, we have seven speakers tonight under public participation. Before I call our first speaker up, I do have a short paragraph to read.
Thank you.
The Board invites interested citizens to address the board on any subject that they desire other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any board member, staff member, citizen, or student of the district. The Board provides an opportunity on the agenda for citizens to address the board, and we welcome your participation. The Board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the board infringes on the guidelines as stated previously or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, each of you will have three minutes to present. Mr. Schaefer will keep time, which will be displayed on the monitors. According to law, the Board may not take action on any item that is not on the agenda. The Board will not debate nor respond to any question during the meeting in order to research the question thoroughly before replying. The Board will seriously consider the matter brought to its attention and respond appropriately. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal utterance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district, and we will hear you now. Our first speaker tonight is Cristiana Chavez, speaking regarding Momentum.
Good evening, School Board Trustees and Dr. Henhauser and everyone in attendance. My name is Cristiana Chavez, and I'm a proud parent of Wunchi High School Distinguished Honors Graduate and now a freshman scholar. I would like to take the time to speak with you in regards to the transportation concerns with Momentum High School. I would like for my daughter to have the same high school experience and success and opportunities as her big brother. Unfortunately, she struggles with ADHD and dyslexia. Spring ISD has the opportunity to contribute and allow her and help her with this important journey and milestone. Momentum High School offers smaller classes, personalized learning plans, and virtual learning, which would help her prepare for college and her future. Unfortunately, right now, transportation is not provided, or at least it's not known. The homeschool that she would be zoned to is Westfield High School, and currently Momentum is on the premises or the grounds of Westfield High School. Students who attend Westfield High School as her homeschool are already bused on the campus and could potentially use the same busing system and transportation opportunities. I simply ask as a parent of a scholar with a disability on record with Spring ISD to be afforded the privilege and opportunity and special provisions of transportation. I first learned about Momentum High School through one of my niece's teachers. She currently attends Momentum and has flourished in her learning. She's also experienced disabilities. She now also will be graduating ahead of her high school class. I just ask that my daughter has those same opportunities. As I said, she has struggled with disabilities, and she's had great teachers. Unfortunately, she needs a little more specialized learning and a little more instruction. As a parent, I do what I can to help and assist her, but I also work hours that are not really traditional. I work in the OR setting, so I don't have set hours. And I don't know what my schedule is gonna be like from day to day. So to have those extra provisions and accommodations would also help her to have even more guidance and things that I can't help her with. I graduated in 2004. I also attended schools in Spring ISD, and the learning is very different. And going back to school myself, as I said, my 2023 Distinguished Honors Graduate has had to help me in my current college classes, and he's also tutoring his sister. So having these programs that we didn't have when I attended school has definitely made a difference in the school system. So we also appreciate you all for that opportunity as parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Kabrita Thomas, to speak regarding the Police Department.
Hello, my name is Kabrita Thomas. And to trustees, board members, Dr. Henhauser, I just wanna give a shout out to the Spring ISD Police Department. I wanna say that the information, some of it, is very limited because I got my information from the media, and then I used my inferring skills. So that was an incident at a school, and the media stated that that was someone that went into the school with a gun, and two people were arrested. So I'm gonna use my inferring skills and say, "Thank you, Spring ISD Police Department, for your fast response, your prompt response, and the training that all of you also went through with the active shooter drills." Because that day, everybody went home safe. And it was because of the brave men and women that we have who serve each of us each and every day to make sure that we all go home safely. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Yolanda Merritt to speak regarding Spring AFT.
Good evening, Board President Durant, Board of Trustees, and our super proud Superintendent, Dr. Henhauser. On behalf of the largest and most active union in all of Spring ISD, we want to thank you for a productive school year. Because we are stronger together, the proud, super proud superintendent and I were able to attend a luncheon with the National Leader, Randy Weingarten. Spring AFT was able to partner to support spring learning fairs, new teacher orientations, and various learning fairs. We provided lunch for over 35 campuses. Thank you, principals! We also worked with the Legislative Breakfast for two local senators. We actively participated on the bond committee and supported the election campaign, where I can say, or we can say, "We won that." We sent dozens of educations to Austin to lobby support of public education during the 88th Legislative Session. I am so proud to say that Spring AFT is being noticed at both state and national levels among the American Federation of Teachers for how we are doing this work together. And as we know, much work has been done and much work is still needed. We're thankful for the upcoming Wellness Days and the retention initiative with a payout of August 10th, 2024. And for all of the teachers and staff, not just select ones. We are looking forward to how we can work together to better support Reading Academy and continued work-life balance. Now, with my last minute, my cohort here did not get in in time to sign up, but she wanted to express her deep gratitude and a special thank you to Dr. Martinez for being a very involved leader. But we kinda had a little thing because I said, "You know, Dr. Perez was there first." So we are in great appreciation to our board members. We have a gift here for you on behalf of Spring AFT. And it just say, "May you be proud of the work you do, the person you are, and the difference you make from Spring AFT." And we look forward to partnering with you all in the upcoming school year because we are better, we are stronger and better together. Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, we win as a team, right?
Up next, we have Ben McMillan to speak regarding the RFQ.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, and guests. I just wanted to bring out a few points on your last two RFQs, or weirdly, the last four RFQs that were submitted for architectural services. As we went through this RFQ and looked at the evaluation criteria, me myself personally felt that it was pretty much biased. And as being a firm of color, minority firm, we already had a disadvantage when it comes to the scoring system. And by that, I mean that when you look at it, when you say, "Well, if you got a firm that has four registered architects, they get 10 points." But if you have a firm that has two registered architects, they get two points. To me, that doesn't matter. What matters to me is being experienced. Are you qualified? You know, I'm reminded of 1 Samuel, Chapter 17, when we talk about David and Goliath. All right, whereas here you had Lil' David, but you had Big Goliath. And we all know the story. Lil' David had a slingshot and a stone, and he killed Goliath. So I asked you, is bigger always better? You know? I believe that experience, and if you can show the qualifications, like for me, I know I'm qualified because we've done the type of projects that's in this RFQ. But in the scoring process, it doesn't mean nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Donald Davis to speak about the sidewalks.
President Durant, Board members, Dr. Henhauser, and the exec board. May the work I do, may the work you do, speak for me. I think about three or four years ago, we lost- I think about three or four years ago, we lost a scholar, Alabama, well, excuse me, on Ella, Alabama Middle School, and I came to the board and said, you know what, we need to get some sidewalks. And I did not know how it could be done. I thought, I was a new board member, I thought that we could do it as support, and someone, I can't remember correctly, said, no, we have to go to the commission and to our community to get support. And what, almost ten years later, we lost two other scholars during that timeframe, maybe more, I know three had lost their lives on Ella. And I said, walk, drive down, I live in this community, as I drive down Ella now, and I see the sidewalk, it's completed. Last little piece in front of Westfield is completed. So President Durant, and I got to also mention Rodney, who we had a connection, I know there's a video, with our commission, Rodney Ellis, thank you for putting safety first for our children. We always said that, I'm saying, we, because I live aboard, we always say, safety is first, but now, as we drive down Ella, we can see it in action. Now, we have to train our young, the scholars to walk on the sidewalk, because I live in the community, and I stopped, like, right from schools, I said, baby, walk down the sidewalk, it's there for you to walk down. No, it's not for you to walk, you know, in the middle of the street. So I think I'm going to come out of retirement and become a patrolman on that little corner next year to make sure that our children, and you just, I'm so proud of you all. Thank y'all so much for the safety and putting safety first. Thank you very much. Have a great summer, by the way.
Up next, we have Ken Graves to speak regarding the RFQ.
Good evening, Madam President, our super proud Superintendent, our distinguished Board Members, and executive team. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome our new head of HR to the team. Welcome to the family. Get ready, it's all coming forward. I'd like to speak with you tonight, or first off, we start tonight's, we start tonight's meeting and every meeting with our equity statement. I ask that you keep this statement in mind as we work through the RFQ process for architects that's currently under review. We expect the process to be transparent. However, no matter how transparent you are, if the process itself is flawed, the results you receive will be what you have within the program. We've all heard or used the term garbage in, garbage out. You have to inspect what you expect. There are firms that have been bragging on the street for the past nine months that they have our district in the bad. Not my words, but theirs, they own us. And this was before we had secured an affirmative vote of the community, which I might add, they did nothing to assist us and support the effort. I can appreciate the confidence that a firm may have when a RFQ hits the street, but with limited time, that this particular, that these particular RFQs had for response, only two weeks, and the structure and the manner in which these RFQs were drafted, it does not give the appearance that a fair and equitable evaluation will occur. I challenge you to review the tape from the Q and A review for Spring High School and the Performing Arts Center. Her attendees were told by district that the district only wanted to review same project, same scope, same size, with projects that were completed within the last five years. If you did not have it, you need not apply, you would not move forward. In my opinion, this is a method of exclusion. A track record of a firm for quality twenty-first century school design, management, and savings would be a better review versus project size and recent completion. I challenge you to inspect the process that's currently under review. Don't let our tax dollars go to firms that are not investing within our community. Thank you for this.
Up next, we have Cyrus Johnson to speak regarding the bond.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Executive Committee, Dr. Hinojosa. Tonight, I want to speak from the heart, and it's related to the recent bond that just passed. I was a part of that committee, along with some of the board members and some of the members in the community, and we did a great job in passing it, and we did a great job in being able to get an eight-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond passed. However, I'm somewhat disappointed, you know, as Mr. McMillan and I guess Mr. Graves came up to talk about the evaluation process, we are a school district that is fifty percent minority and majority of Latino kids and also thirty-five-plus percent of African-American kids. We tell these kids every day that they can be lawyers, that they can be doctors, that they can be astronauts, that they can even be superintendents. I've actually heard you, Dr. Hinojosa, said, some kids don't even think that they could do or be something until they see it. So what I'm saying to you tonight is that, in terms of the work that's going to be awarded, obviously, a lot of work has been awarded to majority firms in the past, but there have been firms that have, that are very qualified, that are women-owned, and that are firms of color, that should be considered, not because of who they are, but because of the qualifications that they have, the staff that they have. And so I'm asking this board, from a standpoint of parity, equity, and opportunity, that this is truly looked at. Apparently, there are some flaws to me in the evaluation process, and I think they really need to be taken a look at, considered, and really take a look at how these firms are evaluated. Like Mr. McMillan was saying a minute ago, is that, you know, you may be big, but that doesn't necessarily mean you're the best. And large and small firms both have strengths and weaknesses. So I ask the board to really just take a look at this and recognize the fact that there are qualified firms out there that can do that work, that are capable of doing the work, and they have the staff to do the work. So thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you.
We have no additional speakers registered for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. Give them a minute to set up. Our next item tonight, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Schools, Miguel Perez.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Durant, fellow trustees. Tonight, we're going to be reviewing the second iteration of the Student Code of Conduct, and we will have Ms. Tracy Walker, Assistant Superintendent for the high schools. We will also have Ms. Ken Fontenot and Dr. Martinez. If you guys could please step here to the, not the podium, but to the computer, so that we can begin the presentation. And before they begin, just wanted to talk about, a little bit about the why and where we're headed. So the Student Code of Conduct is the district's response to requirements for Chapter Thirty-seven of the Texas Education Code, and this document provides the methods and options for managing students in the classroom and on the grounds, discipling the students, and preventing, and really intervening as a prevention tool, so that we can minimize student discipline problems in all of the campuses. And tonight, we are asking you to review the updates, and at some point after the presentation is done, to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Student Code of Conduct. Dr. Martinez, if you could please begin, and I do want to bring to your attention that we do have a folder next to you that provides you with a presentation and several documents, and there's also some flash drives with the digital documents as well for your review.
Thank you. Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Hinojosa, Board of Trustees. At your request, my colleagues and I are here to provide a second update on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Student Code of Conduct. As a reminder of the information that you received on Thursday and the information that you will be receiving today, are aligned to updates that we received from TEA, from TASPI, in accordance to our Spring ISD policy. Again, just also a friendly reminder that we are in the legislative year, but as of today, we have not received an update that will impact the Student Code of Conduct for the upcoming school year. Again, last time we mentioned this, but our recommendations and actions that we'll be taking are grounded in the feedback that we received during our listening tour, excuse me, our listening tour. We were able to engage two-hundred-and-fifty stakeholders, and we sought their feedback on the following focus areas. Again, after reviewing and analyzing the responses, we looked at trends, and those trends then made up our recommendations, and some of the things that you were hearing tonight, and some of the actions that we'll be taking. Again, on Thursday, you requested additional information on a couple of topics, which are bullying, cyberbullying, the dress code, which included the use of ID badges, and also our discipline matrix, and so we'll be ready to share that this evening. And so again, we'll start off with bullying and cyberbullying, and so when we engaged our stakeholders at the listing fair, we asked for feedback on this, and this is what we heard from them. And so they said, when it comes to bullying, there was a lack of awareness of what bullying truly was. There was also a lack of alignment and timely implementation of practices and procedures for reporting and investigating allegations of bullying. Also, there was a need for proactive measures to address root causes of bullying, and also there was a more need to strengthen our discipline and consequences for substantiated cases of bullying in our district. So as a result of this, we're committed to doing the following to address that, and that is to strengthening our training and professional development for our stakeholders. And so that training is going to be rooted in this very important document, which is the Spring ISD Administrative Guide for Bullying and Harassment. This document holds a plethora of resources for administrators and stakeholders, everything from the district policy to the definition, checklist, and guidelines for investigation, expectations for reporting, measures to address and to prevent the root causes of bullying. So it's critical that our leaders are aware of this document and that we're implementing it, the expectations throughout the school year. And so we're committed to doing that, and I know that during our last meeting, we also talked about the importance of the timing of when this will occur, and so we're committed to doing it before the first day of school.
And can you define stakeholder?
Stakeholder, so stakeholders here for our district would be our leaders and our teachers, staff at our district that, in our schools, that will benefit from the resources within this document.
One more time, who are the stakeholders?
Stakeholders here would be our leaders, and our administrators, and our teachers as well. Principals, assistant principals, associate principals, our leaders that deal with discipline and bullying cases at our schools as well.
Okay, I have, I want to express some concerns, but I don't want to interrupt your flow, but we are going to have a little bit of Q and A here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And so to address the proactive measures here, we are going to take the recommendations from our admin guide here, and again, to order to effectively address root causes for bullying, it's important that we follow, again, the admin guide and implement curriculum that teaches kindness, communication, cooperation, friendship, empathy, anger management, and conflict resolution. So it's critical that as leaders, we ensure that there's the quaver and seven mindsets and champs are implemented with fidelity at our schools on a daily basis. And lastly, we also want to, again, bring awareness to the seriousness of bullying and what it truly is. Right now, bullying is defined in our Student Code of Conduct, but it is in our glossary towards the end of the document, page forty-two, and so we're going to bring it front and center. It's going to be at the front of our Student Code of Conduct to ensure that everyone knows exactly what it is, to ensure that people are clear on the consequences of this behavior. And so we are confident that by implementing these strategic steps, that we'll be reducing the cases of bullying and cyberbullying in our district.
Good evening. The next area I want to address is the area of dress code, and this is a challenging area for schools, but we're committed to strengthening our work around this. So I want to kind of walk you through a little bit of this and provide some additional information around the area of dress code. Outside of the survey that we talked about last week, there was an additional survey taken on our incoming ninth graders that are coming to our new ninth grade centers. So over two-hundred-and-fifty participants, both parents and students, participated in the survey. Want to give you a look at some of the key areas that were, that pulled from this. Using this survey along with the other surveys we discussed, we've been able to collect a lot of voices from our parents, from our administrators, from our principals, and our students. We're going to address four focus areas. This first area was brought to our attention. During this survey, these areas came to the top, the top five areas. One, parents, community, our stakeholders, as we talked about in this survey, they want to clear guidelines on dress codes and ID badges. What are the clear guidelines, expectations? And as we work with principals every day, and this part of our, this timely distribution of all resources prior to the beginning of school is important, because that we need to start school with all the resources and everything we need, so that we set the tone for what the expectations are going to be like, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Under this, using this voices from our parents and our stakeholders, we have to reset and communicate in the beginning of the year. What are our expectations? As I said, these actions, our ninth grade centers have already made a commitment to standardize dress for all incoming students throughout this survey. A survey was given and ranked these questions, and you can see here what our parents said. Dress code promotes more equitable and fair practices. Seventy-two percent of our parents ranked this as a top three. Dress code makes schools safer for intruders. Sixty percent of our parents and participants in this survey ranked this in the top three. And lastly, dress codes offer clear guidelines on proper dress and proper clothing for campuses. Sixty percent ranked this at the top three. I say to you, yes, this is a challenge, so we have to make a commitment to strengthen ourselves in terms of monitoring this dress code, and I want to talk a little bit more around adding some more. This piece around timely resources, being sure that we have our lanyards, our badges, our pictures, all of those things accessible to principals on the first day, so that students see that we're prepared, we have expectations, we're going to monitor, and we're training and preparing our staffs prior to school starting. So resources is a major part of setting the example of where we're going with this. We're committed to that. In terms of dress code, more information, this part around alignment and timely implementation, timely implementation of the consequences aligned across all schools, our procedures aligned across all schools, and clear consequences. We have new administrators, new teachers, new staff, so we have to continue to repeat the vision. Our action steps, our action steps fall in these areas. Enter, execute, expect, and inspect. Entering the building is our first opportunity to draw attention to this, to this piece of work. As our students arrive, they know that we're looking to be sure that they're dressed appropriately, that they have their ID on as part of their dress code, and that it's highly visible. Our campus must execute the dress code, and all of our campuses, most of our campuses already do these things. They have areas where students step aside, please step aside and put a temporary badge or a temporary wristband, but not just doing it, doing it consistently, doing it across of our district, and doing it with fidelity every day. As I said, it's a challenge. Our students are smart, and they're going to work around it if we're not being visible and doing this work diligently. Then, school-wide expectations, not just as school starts, not just at the AM, but throughout the day. Somehow, students tend to lose their badge in between transitions throughout the day. So we have to be sure that, put your badge back on, it's in my pocket, put your badge back on, it's in my backpack. These, this is a constant until it becomes a culture. These, this is a constant until it becomes a culture, not a policy, not a rule. But it is, it becomes who we are, who our district is, and who Spring ISD is. Students will learn if we stand firm. And as I said, we have to make that commitment. I want to talk a little bit about consequences. As a leader, we see consequences in different ways because consequences can be that a student doesn't have another uniform. It may be such that we are forgiving the uniforms to students, which our principals already do. We're prepared for those kinds of things. But we also have to be ready for the challenges in this area. When we talk about setting expectations, our consequences are such as these. Mandatory parent and student conferences. You notice I said student. In our secondary schools, our students can understand that they need to be a part of a conference with their parents. After-school consequences, Saturday detention, but not only detention, but restorative practices, talking to them about following rules. We talked about character, those kinds of things to restore the practices and helping students understand, it's not that we just want you to dress alike, but it's important for your own safety. Having students understand the why, the loss of privileges. Of course, for repeat offenders, there can be ISS and OSS for repeat offenders. Our campuses do a beautiful job of offering incentives and drawings and things. If you have good attendance, if we never have to pull you because of dress code, they offer winning tickets to sporting events. They come up with all kinds of campus incentives. We want to continue that and grow in that area. I know that, as I said, this is a challenging area, but if we help students understand, we teach and train our parents, we prepare them with the resources and include our staff at high-level monitoring of this, this just will be another tool in our tool chest of making sure that Spring ISD and our campuses are safe. We're going to turn it over now to my colleague, Ms. Tracy.
Good afternoon. So we're here today to talk more about the Student Code of Conduct and what was formerly called the Matrix that we talked about. And we have some updates and feedback that we want to share based on recommendations that we got from our stakeholders during our listening tours that we talked about the last time, but also some of the items that we talked about the last time we were here. And so two of the main things that we gathered from the overall process of doing the listening tours were that, was that our Student Code of Conduct, we'd like to see more alignment in the consequences issued by the administrators as well as the tool. So having something that's revised, we talked about renaming it so that the purpose is understood, that it's not a punitive document, it is a guide. And so you'll see that we put some work around that here recently as we heard your feedback. You have three resources that I want to point to. You may have it on your flash drive in your folder as well. We have the update to the Student Code of Conduct, and I'll make reference to that in a little bit. We also have what's now called the Campus Administrator Coding Guide. Again, emphasis on the naming convention of it simply because, again, Matrix, it does have a connotation to where you may feel it is mandatory. So we did listen to that feedback. We want our campus administrators who are implementing discipline and strategies to think restorative. And in order to do that, you have to know that those processes need guidance, right? And so always keeping that top of mind that this is a guidance, this is a learning continual process. There's no one-size-fits-all. As our students grow, as our campuses grow, we grow. And so a guide was a better naming convention, we felt, to align with the goal and the vision that we're headed towards. And then I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. So in the Code of Conduct on page 53, and I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I didn't share. There's another reference sheet that looks like this in the folder. This was created simply to outline the five areas that we're speaking about today that we were asked to mention. It also breaks down the actions that we have spoken to, that we're committed to doing. But we also included the reference to the Student Code of Conduct, the page where you could find this information, as well as the new Campus Guide for Administrators so that you don't have to search and do all of that, you know, searching to find these items and what we're speaking of, okay? And so the Student Code of Conduct, it is identified in, on page 53, the update to the Student Code of Conduct that has gone through some iterations. But the main thing to point out is that it includes part of the Campus Administrator Coding Guide that we spoke about here the last time. We formally called it the Matrix, and we talked about some of the concerns and the misalignment that the campus administrators maybe spoke to in the listening tours because they were a part of that stakeholder group, okay? I did that group as well as Dr. Martinez. And so they were able to voice concerns as well, as well as the principals. So it was a really comprehensive process. And we took into consideration all of that because the goal is to grow. Based on their feedback, what was done is instead of the Matrix, the Campus Administrative Coding Guide, it has two tabs. So on the first tab, you have the local codes and they are coded in green. And then on the blue tabs, you have state codes. Those are mandatory infractions and incidents in coding that our administrators must abide by. The local codes are codes that we create based on some of the incidences that we have experienced in our schools. And so we use this to guide, again, some of the things that we see frequently in every level of every building over time historically. And what are consequences, what are the, what is the definition of it? So that our administrators are very clear on that. And one very unique thing about the Coding Guide is, that I appreciate, is that the guiding characteristics. It gives an administrator an idea of, hey, this is what fighting looks like, right? This is what, give you an example, slapboxing may look like. This is what inappropriate behavior disruptions may look like. Again, it is not punitive, it is not a one-size-fits-all, but it does give someone who may be new to the role guidance and characteristics to look for when they're assigning discipline consequences or they're looking for ways to address discipline. The other part of the Coding Guide are the, of course, levels, the first offense, second offense, third offense. But it also delineates what types of consequences and the duration. It gives it a maximum, a minimum to a maximum amount. One thing to note in the guide that we really wanted to emphasize is that, again, I have to say, it is not a one-size-fits-all, right? And we can't put a cap on any one situation. We really want our leaders to be able to make decisions and have support in doing so at their fingertips. However, we want them to be able to have something to use, to reference, and also collaborate with others as a guiding tool when they're making decisions in regards. So it is a minimum to a maximum parameter, but it does not define exactly what you must do. And I think that was part of some of the concern possibly with the previous document that our administrators had to use. So this is, it gives them a little bit more autonomy and discretion, however it does express what we want to accomplish with discipline in addressing it. It is aligned to the disciplined Student Code of Conduct in that same table that you see in the, the guide is also represented in the Student Code of Conduct on page 53. And so again, just for reference, this, this document that you have in front of you, it's just a user guide for the purpose of tonight. It is not all, it doesn't encompass everything, of course, in the Student Code of Conduct, but the five areas that we came back to address specifically, this is an outline of, here were the areas of feedback that we got from stakeholders, and here are the actions that we have committed to and are committed to taking. And here is where you can find that information in both documents. And I'll give you some time. And so I'm going to go ahead to the next steps here.
Oh, yeah, I just, was it time for questions? I just had a comment. Well, you mentioned, one of you, I can't remember, mentioned culture. And I noticed that that word, I think it would be good if that's included somewhere. And just, you know, because you hit the hammer on the nail. You're trying to change the culture. I think you should just include that word throughout the.
Okay. Thank you.
So we would, we would leave wanting you to know, this work doesn't end here. This work does not end here. We have spoken to lots of parents. We've had so many surveys and gathered information this summer. And it helped, those voices helped us pull together this work. But we have to begin to do this work because next step is training. The next step is communication. The next step is delivering materials and giving out resources and all of those things that we talked about through this piece, through this presentation that we've given this week. So it doesn't stop here. Actually, it starts here. The biggest piece of it is our commitment to doing the work, to implementing it at the highest level and being sure that we're all consistent and that we don't only, as assistant sups, that we're not the ones. We hear the voices of everyone and especially our voices of our principals, that we do this right because our children expect it and safety is a priority.
Also, we want to make sure that by the end of August, we can walk away stamping all of our stakeholders that we've listened to throughout this process. That would include our teachers, our counselors. We start our training next week with our leadership at the Summer Leadership Institute. We continue out through the summer with our teachers. We will continue inviting all stakeholders to the table throughout the process. Our students are always, high schoolers are always contacting and giving input and wanting to be a part of the process. And so we, we expect to continue to involve them in that process because we think that it impacts them and, you know, their voice is absolutely important. And so that would look like by the end of August, we want to make sure that we train our campus, our teachers, our counselors. We communicate. I'm a big fan, huge fan of communication, branding, making sure that the word is very clear. It is expressed in many platforms. I'll be honest with you, some of the parents are already calling to find out as a result of the survey, what do we do? Can we start shopping for a standardized dress at the ninth grade? Our parents are supportive of that right now. We're telling them to hold because we want to make sure that we do have all of our stakeholder information and we include that for our community. But communication is key, keeping that on the forefront throughout the summer. We know that sometimes we lose that connection when they're not with us every day. And so it's just very important that our associate principals who are here year-round and our principals, as well as our district staff and ourselves, are in the work and constantly keeping that on the forefront so that it doesn't come back and it be something else to address. It is ongoing right now. And then also, holding the grade-level meetings. We do the grade-level meetings, but strengthening what that looks like. Sometimes when you decrease numbers, you strengthen the message. And I've heard you say, Ms. Hodges, culture, that's one way that you can really, really strengthen the culture. It is good to do school-wide messaging, but sometimes some of our scholars get lost in that. And so having smaller environments over a longer period of time or over a period of time, you have a smaller environment, you have your athletes or any other group where they're hearing the constant message, it has an impact in that way. And that's our next steps.
So earlier when I asked about defining stakeholders, you said it was administrators, teachers, the campuses. But where are parents going to be engaged in this final work?
In the final work of the Student Code of Conduct? I believe that they can also be a part of that process as we continue to grow and shape and put some, some structure around what the consequences look like. I think that is part of the reason why the decision was made to include it in the Student Code of Conduct so that there is inclusivity, right? So that they see, they have the same information that our campus administrators have, where we have a code, we have an incident, we have the characteristics, the definition, the guiding examples so that our parents are aware of what that really looks like or an incident really looks like. And so thus far, the listening tours did include their voice. They were a part of that process. We included that, we have that data. The survey that went out to the incoming eighth graders, the majority were the parents, of course. Our students, they didn't want too much of that information out. But our parents, they really, really started, you know, responding right away. So they have given their input. But I do believe that we should continue to take that further and just strengthen that process, include them as we revise and update.
Just so that they'll have awareness?
Absolutely.
Not that they memorize this, but they at least know where they can access it.
Where they can access it.
So that we have consistency.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback. And that is included in the communication, making sure we always connect with the parents throughout the summer. Sometimes, again, we can lose our parents in the summer, we lose our communication in the summertime. But this is the time to be really, really, you know, strong about things that we feel strongly about, so.
I just want to encourage you because one of the things we learned when we did the table talks was that the parents learned, they all wanted the information different ways. So just make sure that how, that we think about different modes of communication, whether it's texting, maybe doing a little vignette and posting them on the website so they'll see the changes that have been made and things like that. Just keep that in mind.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that feedback. And I know that Ms. Carroll, Trinita Carroll, is going to be also a part of that process, reaching out to parents, engaging them in what that looks like and the need and the support that we do need from home to just help guide that work. As, as we said, it's really about shaping a culture rather than something punitive. And sometimes it just helps to have all, well, all the time it helps to have everybody, you know, a village to help support that.
And it's almost like a, maybe even short little videos like,
Yeah.
you know, our efforts to ensure that your kids are safe and focused.
Absolutely.
You know, here's our processes and here's where you can access that information.
I would point out, oh, one, I want to thank Trustee Hodges for pushing the Table Talk initiative. Because in my six years on this board, this is the closest we've ever interrogated this process. We did Student Voice a few years ago, but I don't feel like we ever really examined this. So I like a lot of, this work is solid work. I especially appreciate like this idea of timely resources. We need to get information in parents' hands before the school year starts.
Yes.
My son went through half the year without an ID badge. It never was checked on it. And I'd ask him every, his sisters are walking in with ID badges. He doesn't have one. Then when he finally got one, it didn't have his picture on it, which was never a problem for anybody until it was time for him to take his STAR test and they were checking IDs. That's a, that's a problem. And I'm a little alarmed that bullying, which is something that is as old as children, our stakeholders can't define it. And so I'm curious is, was them being unable to define it, like they didn't, they couldn't cite the code? Or do we really have people, which I don't believe, that don't know what bullying is in our schools?
I think that what we heard was that it seems like in our schools, everything is being labeled bullying. If they have a misunderstanding at recess, it's bullying. So it's really understanding the difference between bullying and a simple conflict between students. So that was where that feedback came from.
That speaks to the need for education.
Exactly.
And so I checked, I went on my iPad and checked because there's a Stop Bullying button on the first page of our website, right? That explains all of this. And so it's just curious to me. And so it's just curious to me that this is like a novel thing to folks. Um, and so again, I think this is excellent work. The implementation with fidelity will really matter. Um, holding people accountable, consequences. It appears to me that as, as excited as we get about our extracurriculars, if you're a football player or a basketball player walking around without your ID badge, I don't see how you participate in the game that Friday. I don't, like, that's an easy fix to that. We get our leaders on the campuses, which our athletes are, making sure that we're enforcing policy with those folks. I, I just, I don't see why this is such a huge problem. And maybe it's because I'm not on the campus. But I'm just surprised, but thank you for the, the, your follow-up. It, it hit, it hit, I think.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate, uh, what my colleagues have said. Thank y'all for all of this work. Um, and Trustee Hodges mentioned culture. And so we talked about restorative practices. So, and I know that even in the handbook, it says, as a district, we're moving away from punitive consequences to more progressive and restorative practices. It says at the secondary level, but we are at the elementary level also. So that might be something maybe to adjust, just to clarify that it's everyone, not just at the secondary level. Um, I'm wondering when it comes to restorative practices, how are we, how is that training and support for teachers and administrators being offered? And how are we making sure that it is, um, consistent across schools?
Trustee McDaniel, today we met with Dr. Collins at our counseling department. And, and it's ironic because we sat down and we mapped out so much training. Training for teachers, starting this summer, training for administrators, training for T O Ts, train the trainers so that there's someone on the campus that has been trained. What are the new programs? Not only SEL programs, but character development programs. She, she coached us hard. We led, we worked on what the leadership teams would look like in, in, on campuses and how we address it. And, uh, what new programs we're enhancing and how do we continue with what we've already started? So with our Quaver, with our seven mindsets, how do we, what worked? Where do we need to address it to make it even better and stronger? So today we had a big meeting with our, uh, administrative team, along with our counseling team, to be sure that we have those dates. In fact, some of us, we've already sent some of out to our principals on hold the date so that they begin this work. So it's important, but we are developing it. It's already there and we're ready to be trained and executed.
Can you share what are some of those challenges that we've had, um, that you went over today?
Mm-hmm. So part of our training was what, what, that we talked about starting right at the beginning of the year. Having it, we, she talked to us about, we have to be ready on day one to present it and so that it becomes consistent. So that it becomes part of who we are. We talked about having all our materials and that every teacher is held accountable to do it for the time that we've done it. We know that Mondays will be a day where we're working on character ed. Are our counselors trained? Do we have a T O T on campus so that someone on the campus is, uh, uh, monitoring it? How do we collect data in that area? How, uh, is it working? What kind of conversations are we having? All of those kinds of questions that we initiated, but maybe didn't do it at the highest level. So how do we improve over last year? So our, our teachers and staff that were here last year, our principals have already implemented this work. But how do we make it more consistent and take it to the next level? Character ed, she, she introduced some new pro, uh, new programs to us. So we quickly asked, when will we be trained and how do we, how do we do this work? So those are some of the things that we have to not overcome, but to strengthen.
So the counseling department is providing the training. Is that accurate?
And, and both internal and external trainers. We have internal and external trainers that'll be working with us.
And so for the high schools specifically, uh, we have height, seven mindsets. But something that the ninth grade centers have recently done that launched the survey was visit our middle schools, right? So that we can help the administrators and the associates bridge that gap. See it, uh, meet with the, uh, principals. And so we were able to explore some of the strategies that have worked, uh, for PBIS there. But also some of the systems, the structured systems that come with middle school so that it translates into the ninth grade center building and that stays continuous throughout the year so that those behaviors over time are carried out. And one other thing that, you know, we've recently talked about is SEL, um, seven mindsets. Um, we reach our students with our SEL, but we also have other students that really, as we saw with graduation, aspire to be leaders, aspire to advocate, aspire to have that opportunity to speak. And so looking into student leadership development as a way to also address social emotional learning. Because we have students that may not feel that they are, um, suffering in a, in a certain way, but they just want a little bit more. What, what do I have? How do I advocate for myself? How do I hold a conversation and schedule a meeting with, uh, someone to advocate for myself? And so those are some of the ideas that we walked away with. Uh, our ninth grade associates are already in the work, uh, they're excited, the parents are excited. So it has been an ongoing process. Uh, we did visit, um, again, our middle schools, we took a field trip, um, called them. And so we, we, we packed up and we, we visited. And so they're excited about that, um, and, and we're ready.
Just when it comes to data, I know we talked about it before. I would be, I would like to see the data that, um, shows our SEL and our discipline, how the correlation, whatever it is that we're collecting, so that we can, we always talk about return on investment, so that we can ensure that it is making an impact. And if we need to make adjustments, then we'll know. Um, and then when it comes.
Before you move on, what is that data? How are we collecting it and what tools do we have?
I'm gonna ask Dr. Perez, because I know that's one of the biggest pieces he and I have been working on. So I'd like Dr. Perez to be able to talk through that.
Absolutely. So we have for, uh, Quaver and for seven mindsets. Uh, the program itself is able to allow us, through Dr. Collins and the Department of Counseling, for us to pull reports by campus and also by a cluster, right? So that we can see how all the elementaries are doing, how all the secondary schools, both middle school and high school are doing. And then through the work of, uh, our research department, then we can then correlate, right? And see if and then, right? If we do more of this, then does, do we have a decrease with that? And so, uh, we are in, uh, this will be our third year. And so we do have, uh, our implementation minutes and the lessons that have been implemented are dramatically have increased compared to year one, uh, after COVID and all of those pieces. And then I can tell you that when you walk through the campuses, talk to teachers and observe what the students are actually getting in what they're, uh, within lessons and then part of the work that they're doing, i- it's, it's super exciting to see that, uh, how that, uh, content is helping them, because it's not mathematics, right? It's not science, but it's something to help you be more mentally stable, which is, uh, our new normal, right? If we're not good up here, then we can't be good throughout your entire body. So something that we put forth, a lot of focuses. And, uh, we do have, our, our teachers are the ones who actually work with the students. So it actually gets them also to lead this work. Because at the end of the day, uh, with the, not only the restorative work, but also of the mental health, uh, initiatives, the, the students spent, uh, the majority of the time with the teachers. And so they have to do that work. And, uh, the counseling team also, they have groups that they also pull the kids to provide some support. And, uh, the campus administrators also work with them through a restorative approach so that we're not just taking a punitive approach. And that's what, uh, Ms. Walker was talking about, PBIS, right? Which is a Positive Behavior Support Systems. How do we reward, um, and acknowledge good behaviors, uh, early on before people get in trouble, right? Because I think if we, uh, reward, uh, students with their good behaviors, then we'll be able to turn around, uh, not only the student behavior, but also the culture for the entire campus. And, and that's the biggest challenge, right? When you're working with, uh, young adolescence, uh, being able to get them to understand the impact of their behaviors, what they say and what they do. So we'll be able to share, uh, some data, uh, with the entire board.
So it's, it, it gleams actionable opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
From the data, okay.
And I also want to say, thank you so much for the opportunity. Uh, uh, there's not that many, uh, Student Code of Conduct that look like this one. Uh, they've done a lot of research and so, uh, very tight. Uh, and, uh, President Durant, do you want to ask, uh, uh, for the board? Uh, we've already reviewed it, but really to approve the 2023, 2024 Student Code of Conduct, uh, as updated and as presented.
Thank you, but I think we've got, I see several lights still on, so we've got questions.
Just one more thing, I would just like to see, um, with our, we know, uh, we have emphasis on equity in our district. And how can we align our implicit bias culturally responsive training with our SEL, with our discipline? And all of it work together so that we are truly providing a comprehensive, um, system of support for our students? Thank you.
Karen, I think you're next.
So I just want to echo all of my colleagues', uh, sentiments as well. And this is really, really great work. Um, I kind of waited because I, I, sometimes some of my colleagues tend to get, and ask the questions and so I just kind of wait. Um, but kind of along the lines of, so it's just a couple of comments. Um, w- well, first question, and I, you kind of touched on it. For the struggling families that we have when it comes to the dress code, do we have a clear outline, uh, of how we can assist those families? Because obviously we're gonna have, we may have many because of our demographics that will not be able to meet the dress code. So do we have something that's clear and they understand how that can be addressed?
We have many resources. That's the one thing, we, what we want to do is more important that our parents inform us and that we're looking to be able to meet the needs. Because through our department, our fa- our face department, they're prepared with supplies, uniforms, shirts, the things that we need. But our individual campuses prepare as well. Principals prepare and are preparing right now so that students come in. And then we have met lots of support from our community. Our churches, I have a school myself, the church dropped off a hundred shirts and they drop off pants and, 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 uh, uniforms and different things. So I would say that it's not only our, our, uh, internal resources, our campus, our principals that prepare, but our community steps in and partners with us to be sure. We, it's not a lack of materials. We just want to be sure that, that our, our, uh, comp, our parents are aware that we're there to support them in this way. But if a child, uh, we find out that, uh, it is those kinds of issues, homelessness or those, we have resources to support all of them.
And I guess that's kind of my question. I know, I know we have a lot of resources, but how do we make sure that the parents understand that? Because if they're only reading the Student Code of Conduct, the only section that we have in there is talking about appeals and it's just a little short paragraph, but it doesn't really give an explanation of what, what options are available to them.
One of the options is when we talked about coming into school without your uniform. Sometimes they don't have to ask. If we see a student coming in, uh, we know, we're gonna send, we often, principals send them home with them. Or, you know, get, ask the parent, may we give them to you? Sure, uh, uh, they have drives and different things communicated through our newsletters. If you need anything, our counselors, or if you need anything, we're here to serve. Please let us know. These are the things that we can make available to you. So I think the best resource is not even at this level. The best resource is our pr- our principals, our campus counselors, because they know the parents, they know the children, they see the students and they can act without having to be asked, often.
And I think to stretch on what, uh, Ms. Montano is saying into what I've heard here tonight and what we, we've also talked about is just the responsiveness, right? Our, our reaction or not reaction, but our proactiveness when it comes to making sure we communicate, staying connected with our parents. Um, oftentimes, we, we may forget to say that message ahead of time so that a parent doesn't have to ask.
They don't have to ask.
Um, or so that we don't have to have a student walk in. And so just making sure that we make sure that our principals are always keeping that line of communication in a way that that connection can happen for our parents so that it removes the, um, the confusion or the worry or the concern. Uh, just keeping that fluid and including it in the weekly newsletters, all of them do weekly newsletters, keeping that front of, top of mind. Um, our campuses really do a lot of work with our, our parents. I think it's shaping that and branding it and making sure that it is one message for everyone and everyone has access to it if they should need it.
So my other question is, and it kind of touches on Trustee Adams', um, comment about fidelity and consequences. And I know we're talking about Student Code of Conduct, but looking at this from more of an equity perspective and fairness, we know that sometimes students aren't always the issue. And bullying is not with just the students, sometimes we have faculty and staff. So do we have any place addressed for students other than the QR code? And is that something that we need to include in the Student Code of Conduct? That students have resources if they're experiencing bullying or something to that effect from administrators or teachers?
I think that we do have an access, have a way for our students to communicate that, but it is something we absolutely could consider. Uh, just making sure that the awareness is there on what that looks like. How do I report that if, uh, it is not student to student? We do have a very solidified process for that. Uh, we, we handle that through HR and, and, and our principals are trained, uh, and, and they follow that process with fidelity. Um, and we oversee that. And it's a constant communication and connection between the, the offices. Um, but to your point, I do understand how we can even strengthen that by making sure that the students have multiple ways to, to see that, uh, other than the website.
And our pa- our students talk to us on Let's Talk. They will talk to, they will talk to us on Let's Talk. Every afternoon and the evening, we answer those and we, we respond there. So, uh, sometimes there are students there and saying, I want you to know. And then we can address it that way as well. So Let's Talk is not only for adults, it's also for our students.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Carrera, thank you for asking the question about the dress code. That's what I was gonna ask. I, I just wanted to add that in the past, we had actual pictures of yeses and noes. I, I think some people are very visual, you know, hoping you're doing that again.
We have that, yes.
And, uh, fairness to all schools to make sure that everybody is on the same accord in, in order to be able to carry this out. Because I think this is very well done. Uh, it is gonna be great for us. But do we have everything in place to make sure that the action steps are taking place? For example, we are asking every student, every kid, every school to have a lanyard. And we know that it's gonna be only one week before kids start misplacing and losing lanyards. And they're gonna come back and want another one. And the process of how they're gonna get another one. But then will the school have the machine or the ability to be able to give them the lanyard? I would hate for one to say, oh, well, our machine is down, we can't get a lanyard to you till, uh, two weeks from now when this comes up or that comes up. And it happens. And I go and I find that one school, everybody's wearing them, the other school, half isn't. And the community, well, they don't wear it over there. Their lanyard machine is down. So those things are going to happen. And have you accounted for all these action steps? Another one, for example, you're saying Saturday school. Is every school able to have a Saturday school as a consequence for student actions? It's so great, but make sure that everything is equal for everyone.
Thank you, uh, for that. Uh, we included that on the slide because that was, again, part of the stakeholders', uh, the feedback. Um, overseeing the administrators and the principals group. And, you know, the goal is to, to grow, right? And to get better. And so we want to make sure that we are listening to all stakeholders. And that was part of their concern that they've shared. Of course, we're their direct supervisor, so we, we, we hear it immediately. And, uh, we, you know, we're the ones to, uh, address anything that we need to address immediately. But we felt it was important to include their voice, um, so that they could understand that, yes, we, we heard you. We want to make sure that we're responsive to your needs as well. If we're expecting you to have something in place, we have to be able to provide you with the tools to do that. Um, and so that's where accountability happens, right? And so, yes, absolutely. We, we appreciate you, uh, acknowledging that because our administrators did share that. And we felt it was very important to include that into, in the presentation. And we felt it was very important to include that into the presentation as well as our actions as a, as a organization, not just the assistance to everyone knowing they feel this way. And we want to support the way that, that happens.
And that's why they have to have, we gave a range. These are the kinds of things that you do. And campuses will work with their learning communities. This works for our community, but we have to have a consequence. And here's a range of the kinds of things that are appropriate for the action that that student did. So those conversations, that's why it can never be a one fit for everyone. There's no one fit for everyone. It's going to have to be arranged with the parents, the principals are meeting with their community, their staffs, their students, and developing what's appropriate.
So I had two confirming questions and two comments. So first, you all hear me say all the time, awareness is the first step to change. And so making sure that awareness is out there is where we will see success. But success doesn't mean greatness, success comes from consistency. So it is imperative, not only that we're equitable, but it is consistent. Not just across campuses, but across pods, across grade level seven, eight, nine. It can't be happening in the seventh grade pod, not in the eighth grade pod. So we have to be consistent, and I think that's where we're falling short in making sure that awareness isn't happening and that we aren't being consistent. It's not going to take a lot. I think the culture will change swiftly. When kids see consequences, the word will get out and say, spring not playing, you better have on your lanyard. You know, and so we just need to be consistent in doing it, and it'll happen. They will conform when they know that that's what our expectation is. Kids want rules, we just need to be consistent in enforcing them. And, and I think that's where we can actually begin to see the changes happening here. I was about to call for, Trustee Adams' light is on.
The first day of school is what day? August?
Those are my two questions.
August fourteenth? It still, it still bothers me that we're, August ten. It bothers me that we're training campus teachers by the end of August. Like, that just, that looks off. And that, to Trustee, President Durant's point, like, you want to hit the ground running with this, you want to have all your resources in place before school starts, and you want to have everybody trained before school starts.
So I said, two, two comments and two questions. My first question is, will all students have lanyards on day one?
That is our goal, yes. We want all students to have lanyards. It's going to take a, an effort for all of us to make sure that those resources are available, but yes, that is, that is.
Will all training be completed by day one of school? For all stakeholders, including the awareness to parents.
Oh, yes.
The, the end of August, I believe that what we're looking at there, Trustee Adams, is the grade level meetings. And so maybe that should have been identified as the end of August because that's when the students come back. Those are the grade level meetings for the students. The rest of that, the training of the campus, communicate with students. All staff would report back during new teacher in service, job alike, anyone that didn't attend any summer training. There's that, that the last opportunity during job alike. So that is at the very beginning of August. But the end of August is kind of like the, the window of August. The end of August, by then, all students need to understand all expectations for the Code of Conduct and not just dress code and lanyards. Absolutely, yes.
Awareness and consistency, got to get it done. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023, 2024 Student Code of Conduct.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023, 2024 Student Code of Conduct updates as presented by the administration.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Carrera that the Board approve the 2023, 2024 Student Code of Conduct updates as presented by administration. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we're actually going to move item 10.2 and item 10.3 up on tonight's agenda. So at this time, I'd like to recognize, without any objections from my colleagues, we're going to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook's.
Thank you, Madam President. So just for clarity, do you, you want to start with 10, is it okay to start with item 10.3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So for item 10.3, which is an update on our bond process, I'd like to call up our Director of Purchasing, Ms. Geraldine Mosley, to come forward and give the Board an update on what's been going on behind the scenes as we've been going through our RFQ process. And as she's coming forward, you all have a copy of the update in your blue folders.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give you an update on our bond and the solicitations that we have started. Within the first quarter, of course, you know that we went through a review of our RFQ process just to allow for you all to review, just to allow for us to put that documentation together. And then in quarter two, we have started the review first. Oh, I'm so sorry. So quarter one, we went through the RFQ review internally. And then starting again quarter two, and April, you may remember that you had an opportunity to look at that RFQ and review it. And then in May, we started our advertising. So last month, we advertised on May nineteenth for our Epic and Spring High School. And then on May twenty-sixth, we advertised for our over and under fifteen million projects. Moving into June, we received those architect RFQ qualifications from those participants. And then we also presented or advertised on this past Friday, our RFQ for our professional services. Looking ahead, our next step would be to facilitate the architect interviews, which will happen in July. So for the architectural services RFQ process, we shared this with you before. Our original dates were for January 2023 and to evaluate in January and then a board approval in March. But to allow for time for us to have that review that was moved to the advertisement, as I mentioned, in May, as well as the evaluation in June and July. And then you will be looking at the recommendations in August. For our professional services, we originally planned to advertise in February as well as evaluate and present to the Board in April. Again, to allow for that time of review, those dates have now been revised. We've advertised now in June, will also continue the evaluation in June and July, and then present recommendations to you in August. So the construction manager at risk proposals, we have original dates for April and evaluation in April, board approval in June. The revised dates would move to September to allow for that recommendation of all of our architect proposals that will come to you in, in August. After that time, then that would allow for us to move into the advertisement in September, evaluation in October, and then recommendations presented to you in November. Just want to mention in regards to the advertisements, advertisement was completed as, with consistency with our other projects in the Houston Business Journal, as well as in the Texas Comptroller site, the Electronic State Billing Daily. We posted those two times, which is required by law. And then the solicitations are open after that last, a week later after that last advertisement. Any questions?
My colleagues, I might refresh my memory, but didn't we ask to see the list? And we may have been given it, I just don't recall, the, the list of where it would be the RFQs would be advertised? Or where the advertisement would take place?
Same place, yes, we previously presented to you back in December, and we talked about those same areas that we would be advertising.
Seems like someone, we had talked about having them advertise in some non-traditional publications. And maybe I'm, if no one else remembers, then I may have just thought about it.
You did. You did mention that. It was brought up, as well as an opportunity to see where all it went.
Well, that was my other question.
We have not seen that.
Yeah.
At least I have.
So I haven't either, so, and if someone can pull the meeting minutes, I know that we were very vocal about that as a board and wanting to see what that looked like before it went out. What did we decide? I know we had lengthy discussion about it, if anyone else can help me remember.
There was a request to advertise, you did recommend some non-traditional publications. And we did ask to see, you know, where we were advertising and what was being advertised. I don't recall seeing that either. And then we also asked for an opportunity to review the RFQ before it went out, which we all had an opportunity in which to do so.
Okay, so I wanted to just clarify really quickly, Trustee Hodges and President Durant, when you say you wanted to see the advertisement, Ms. Mosley, would you repeat where the advertisements were once again?
Yes, the advertisements were posted in the Houston Business Journal as well as the Texas Comptroller's Electronic State Billing Daily.
So those are our normal publications?
They are, and I, I do, I apologize, I do not have a note of other areas that we were, we were posting them. But that, those are the two where we have posted them. And then when you said you wanted to see a copy, you wanted to see a copy of the Business Journal so you could see the RFQ posting, the advertisement?
I thought we, as a board, requested to see the RFQ before it was published. I may be wrong.
And you did.
Right.
The opportunity was provided.
So we did see that.
Yes.
Right, we were afforded an opportunity to review those with general counsel in private viewing. And they were sealed and left in this building.
Okay, I do, okay, all right.
I think you were out of town when we were doing that.
Yeah, I missed it.
I did have a question, though. So they, like, the, the posting requirement is a legal requirement by statute. And so I think it might be helpful if we define non-traditional, like, where would you like to see it?
Like, I know there, I've picked up some of our community papers that have had.
So like, community impact, okay.
Yeah, and I've seen requests, you know, the things placed in there. And I get them by email all the time because I'm on, you know, certain list. I guess I'm just a little concerned because we had discussions about it today. And I know that that was something we were trying to prevent, but go ahead, it's.
I did, I did have a question, Ms. Mosley. Maybe you said it and I was reading and didn't hear it, but what was the reason for the, the revised dates? It looks like we pushed back everything a few months?
Yes, and I'll go back, that was for the review time that was requested. The review from the auditors, as well as for you to be able to review the RFQ, that was that time.
So the audit, so the auditor?
It was the auditor, because the Board made a commitment to adjust our timing so that we would not be the holdup.
So the, the auditor proposal went out in February, and it was recommended at that time, and then in.
And that's Debbie Townsend, correct? Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that, that answers my question, that's what I needed, thank you.
Okay, so maybe we can explore other opportunities when we're putting RFQ out for.
Other opportunities for other, opportunities of where to publish it, okay.
And I guess, we don't, I mean, it's okay, we don't have to do that because now that I think about it and listening to what some of the concerns are, unless we change that whole process, it's not going to matter. So we don't have to exhaust any effort into that. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I want to thank the, I want to thank you for bringing an update this evening. I know I had several questions of where we were in the process from the body, so I appreciate Dr. Hanoussi bringing this this evening. Are there any other questions?
Ms. Westbrook, you can continue.
And Ms. Westbrook, just before you continue, just to remind the Board, we'll continue our weekly updates on our bond, you know, at the end of my weekly update. So you'll have that continuously going with the timeline and where we are in the process. So you'll continue to get that on a weekly basis. And then we've also said that every month, we'll come to this body as a presentation, just like Ms. Mosley did, to give the Board and then our community an update so that they can stay connected on a monthly basis where we are at.
One last question for me. Evaluation for the RFQs, June through July, will we be able to see those?
So as part of the July date that's up there with the architect interviews, that on the second part of the, the interview process, the Board will have an opportunity to be a part of that process, to observe that process.
I'm looking, are you saying?
The architect interviews.
Architect interviews?
We participated in those in the past, as you recall, you're asking about the RFP.
The RFP, the architect interviews, meaning that you're bringing a select group of people to be interviewed. But in order to get on that interview list, that group that you're selecting from, will we be able to see that?
So as of right now, the process is, it's two steps. And so there's an evaluation committee that's a part of the first step, which includes procurement, the construction team, and I believe we've got some of our academic team?
The RFQ process will establish the pool of qualified candidates.
That's correct.
The Board would like to see that, is what I believe she's asking.
To see the process or?
The final pool.
Okay, and so would you like to speak to that final pool?
Yeah, we'll definitely bring the pool forward, you'll be able to see the pool, absolutely.
That's your question, right?
Yes.
You can continue.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. We will go to our next item. And as I'm pulling up our next item, which is the budget presentation, I'd like to ask our guest presenters to please make their way to the front.
Okay, so this is, we're bringing this item back based on our discussion from Thursday evening. And you all have a copy of the presentation at your desk in the red folder. And so, of course, I wanted to start us off with just a refresher that we're looking at this fiscal cliff and making decisions and taking those steps that are necessary to avoid the fiscal cliff that's ahead of us as a result of our SFR funds that are going away after the 2023, 24 fiscal year. And that we have a $34 million deficit that we're working towards eradicating before we pass our. we pass our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So, the budget reduction process, as far as our cross-functional budget committee and our goals that we've been working towards over the last couple of months, you all are very familiar with, we talked about it on Thursday evening, so tonight, we wanted to come back and address those, those budget reduction concerns that were brought forward as a result of the discussion that happened on Thursday evening, and so we wanna dig a little deeper into those concerns, give our principals that you asked to hear from an opportunity to speak through that, so we'll hear from them in just a moment, and though we have three principals that are here with us that will present to you all this evening, we have several more in the audience and several other members of the Budget Collaborative Committee that are here and can assist with answering questions as well. So to start off, we, we separated the proposed budget reductions that are proposed to begin in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four from those that are proposed to begin in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. So the first part of the list is only, again, those that are related to our campuses, as we didn't have any questions or concerns that came from the central office list or from that list that were changing funding sources. So, to begin here with the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget reductions, if you see it in orange, that means that you'll hear more about it in greater detail a little later. So the first item is to reduce our summer school budget. We discussed the digital learning coach position at middle school, which we know is funded by Title I, but would free up some dollars um in Title I so that we could repurpose those funds. We had a reduction in our Quattrick software contract of fifty thousand dollars. We're looking at eliminating one of the two ELA interventionist positions at middle school, and of course restructuring our performance and visual arts staff at both the middle school and high school to achieve a savings of three hun- just over three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We've discussed the elimination of the library aide position and moving those individuals into another vacant position. Our high schools are to eliminate two positions at high school, and they have a dollar amount, that's seven hundred and thirteen thousand, that we'll work towards achieving with the elimination of those two positions. We discussed on Thursday evening the academic generalist position at our elementary campuses that have over approximately seven hundred and twenty students, and that we would change that position from a teaching position to a teacher assistant position. We've seen the elimination of the middle school clerical aide position over the last couple of months, we've discussed that, as well as the math fellow position at the middle schools. So, this is the list that are the proposed budget reductions that would begin in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and again, if you see them highlighted in orange, then we'll talk about those a little bit more. The teen stipends, we've, we've discussed over the last few board meetings, the going from four to three assistant principals at our middle schools that have less than a thousand students is something that we discussed on Thursday evening. The cheer stipend, we've talked through, um as well as the ESL allotment, reducing that by one hundred dollars per student for a savings of five hundred and fifty thousand. We'll talk a little more this evening about the at-risk counselors at elementary. We've spoken a couple of times about the elimination of Naviance as we move on to our new software system, which is Ares, um the elimination of the middle school Sims clerk. New to this evening's discussion, based on the feedback that we received from the board on Thursday evening, we've added a reduction to begin in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five to our athletics budget that is equal to the reduction in our performing and visual arts budget, and we'll talk a little bit more about that um later. And then, what we've talked about on several occasions is for twenty-four, twenty-five, the proposal to provide transportation for our students that live beyond two miles from their campus. So, on Thursday evening, there were specific concerns that were brought forward, and those concerns were surrounding the reduction of the summer school budget, the elimination of the at-risk counselors at elementary, the proposed elimination of the middle school Sims clerk's position, the proposal to provide transportation for those students that live beyond two miles, and then the discussion about including the athletics budget in the reduction proposal. So, to start with, the first item that was listed as a, a challenge or concern is the summer school budget, and I would like to turn that over to Dr. Anales Perez to talk, take us through Perez, to take us through um that discussion. So, Dr. Perez?
Awesome, well, great evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this committee. So I am the proud principal at Reynolds Elementary, and I'm also a proud parent of students in spring ISD, so believe me when I say I took this charge very seriously, um making sure that we can stretch every dollar to make sure we're inspect, impacting students. And so, um I was probably chosen to talk about summer school because I was very passionate about really reinforcing the original intent of summer school. And so, what we're proposing is maximizing our dollars, ensuring a return on investment for all of the students who are strategically chosen to participate in summer school. We wanna make sure that the right students are in the right seats with the right teachers and the right system in place to ensure from day one to the last day of summer school, we can measure and show evidence that it was impactful. And so currently, right now, we wanna make sure that we strengthen that system, uh not have an open enrollment, because if, the wider we cast the net, then the wider we're stretching and not really being as targeted as we should be. We've got great resources, a great curriculum, and great tools to measure students' success and growth, but we've gotta make sure those right students are in those seats and invited. And so, we wanna make sure that um also while being fiscally responsible, making sure that we reduce those sites, um being very strategic in how we select students, starting that work early on, using our district's metrics for identifying the students that are at risk, and then uh making sure that through the equity work that we're doing currently, that based on the tiers of the campuses, we're also assigning seats accordingly. So we do have campuses that have more students, I like to call them in the red, that we wanna get them back into their correct buckets, and so making sure that we're prioritizing the number of seats based on the, the need of the campuses. We do wanna hold tight to the ratios, the bigger the classes, the harder it is to really effectively target the students, and so that's a commitment that, yes, we're saving dollars, but at the end of the day, we're also making sure that those dollars are going very well-spent, and then we, as a district, are measuring that success, and we can say, Johnny A started off here, and through this strategic work at the end of summer school, they are ready to go on to that next grade level and be successful.
I, I do have a question. It felt like a pause for questions. Um, how are students selected for summer school? Is it based on their report card or other indicators?
So right now, we're, we had, we received a, a spreadsheet with our students based on their MOI data, and so those students were identified, uh we also uh made sure that the students that are in, currently receiving tier-three support um were invited. What we wanna make sure is kinda doubling down at a campus level too, and making sure that the MTSS process for those students is already up and running, and so it really is work that starts now, making sure that our teachers are aware and that our parents are aware, so I, I would envision, at least my goal next year was before spring break, my parents should know, your student is a candidate for summer school, and because we, we set our goals at the beginning of the year, we've had our MOI conference with our parents in February, so there should be no guessing game, um but, you know, there's some work at the campus level to make sure that we also are staying true to the MTSS process, to make sure that the students, you know, are getting that timely support throughout the year, even leading up to summer school.
And can you share what MTSS is?
It's the new, it's the fancy way of saying RTI.
Um, last thing, what is the curriculum? Is it still Amplify over the summer?
Yes.
Okay.
And the beauty of it is with uh M-Class and MAP, they're really roadmaps. They're roadmaps for any practitioner to pick up and see where the students' opportunities are, and they start right there. When you cast such a wide net, it's hard to start right there for every individual student, and that's why that strategic lens is really gonna help us.
What do we do with our students that are just outside that criteria, that need help, that are struggling, and my neighbor who fills her son needs summer school and was not selected, um and is struggling um with their classes and in passing star, but we aren't offering any opportunities for them.
So we actually talked about that as a team, even just before this meeting, we were like, you know what, we all have campus allocations in our title budget that we can really get creative, knowing that we're on this fiscal cliff, knowing now where we're at, really planning for opportunities. We could look at um some innovative efforts where we join other campus efforts, and we provide some form of program, but that planning starts now, knowing that the summer school, in order for us to reduce, you know, that expenditure and keeping true to that system and that structure that we're trying to roll out, looking at, okay, what can we do at the campus level to provide those levels of support?
So the last few years, we've had um sort of a, I don't wanna say free-for-all, but we've offered summer school as needed, and we saw ourself move to a B-rated district. So in my mind, it was successful and it helped, and I realize that we have to cut somewhere, but academics is our, we're here to educate, and if, and if we've seen success from that, um why would we want to start cutting there?
No, I, absolutely, and one of the things we talked about as a committee is our forty-five, forty-five, um you know, the year before last was the first time we implemented forty-five, forty-five. That's our new, it's not intervention anymore, it's called acceleration, where we have that precious time to target students on their need. It's only gotten stronger, so this past year, our forty-five, forty-five system and structure across our campus is way more systemic, and those students are receiving the service they would get at summer school every day throughout the school year, and, and you're gonna see that evidence when, when you see the students, um especially in two A, when you see that student individual growth, and so, yes, we wanna continue to provide as many opportunities as we can for our students, um and that's gonna have to kind of fall back on some of us to be more innovative and getting together and thinking through that, but we also have to strengthen our tier-one instruction, that first teach, and look at what we currently have as opportunities every day in our instructional day to really target the kids where they're at.
And I can attest, uh in, on an I-zone campus, which we do have um that select group, um who we have two blended learning blocks every day, one for reading and one for math, and that is anywhere from forty-five to sixty additional minutes that we do for intervention and acceleration with a digital learning piece, a um independent practice piece, and also a small group instruction piece that all students are getting daily.
So you're telling me that the forty-five, forty-five and the, what's the new word for RTI?
MTSS.
What does that stand for?
Multi-tiered System of Support.
Multi-tiered Systems of Support.
It's a home twister, that's why we say new RTI.
And our data will reflect that those were the instruments that moved the needle for us and not summer school.
Yes, 'cause it's a gift to teachers, honestly, when you have, like, you know, we're, now we're going into year three of this curriculum, which is phenomenal, I mean, you, you just see it when you're in the classroom, and when you have, you know, our teachers are just now getting really comfortable with using those metrics, M-Class, MAP, tying that into the curriculum, and making sure that when they have that gift of time, forty-five, forty-five is the gift for you to show off your skills as a teacher with your kids, that's where we're seeing it, and, and you're really gonna see it, um, it's, the state is gonna reward us this year. All those forty-five, forty-five kids that cross that threshold, they're earning us extra points, and we're gonna see those points increase because we have been so targeted with providing the kids what they need.
That's elementary. Can you weigh in for me on?
We talked about secondary, you know, I, I have my second, we talked about secondary, I mean, we've gotta do that credit repair, credit recovery, those are the students. What we tend to run into at elementary that we don't necessarily run into at secondary is we have multi um students from a family, and one might get an invite. Well, I want all of my kids to go to summer school, and that is kinda where, to your point, that it just kept stretching out. We're not gonna deny Mary and Nicholas a chance if their brother is already going, and, but, but we don't realize that, that it's diluting, I think it was Dr. King that used that term, it's, it's diluting our effort, and so we've gotta, and that's where that innovative piece is. You know what, we might have this program going on, like summer school going on, we might expand our efforts in Twenty-First Century, we might expand our efforts at the campus level of doing some type of enrichment camp, but those are the things, knowing now that this is our, this is where we're going with summer school, it opens the door for us to be strategic moving forward.
Dr. Perez, I think what makes me a little nervous about this is, is President Durant said, like, we provide a systemic input, right, because the, the board here, we're about the system, right? And I am nervous about going away from a system that has gotten us some district-wide su- su- success, and relying on rock star principals to make the right choice, and hoping everybody else performs like a rock star principal. Uh, I don't wanna hope that everybody's gonna do the supports that you all do. Um, I'd rather have the system account for, you know, people who might still be in development as a principal and not know how to utilize their resources the way you two do. Um, so that's sort of where my reticence is around this decision.
Do we know what is the number of sites that are being reduced, that we're being reduced to, or like the percentage?
Right now, we are, we have ten sites um that we are currently utilizing for summer school. Um, Dr. Perez eloquently said it all best, and I, I think it's very difficult to put a number in terms of how many sites we would utilize, because there's so many other variables that are involved. Um, but currently, as, as right now, as we stands, Ms. Westbrook's is stating that we're, we're, we're utilizing anywhere between one point eight to two million dollars um to operate um our summer school program, which at, right now, is ten schools, including Ritchie Academy.
So how, I guess I'm, how do we get this number, one point one, what does that account for?
What that did in is a twenty percent reduction in students in summer school.
I mean, what, what is, what does that reflect?
So the number, the, the budget amount is reducing back to the pre-COVID summer school budget. So prior to COVID, we had a million-dollar summer school budget, and we took that million dollars and you created your summer school program and targeted your students, and we made it happen with the million-dollar budget. Since COVID, we have been pretty much saying, come one, come all, if you need something, if you need summer school, you need enrichment, come, and that's where the dilution comes in, because now everyone is there, and the students that may be more on the tier-three side and may have more needs are not necessarily having as much access because there's more students there. So the one point one million dollars is reducing the budget back to the pre-COVID days of when we did have a more strategic, less number sites um type summer school program.
Hey, Ms. Westbrook, remember, uh as a committee, we kinda talked about how um we received um an initial slate of slots, and as parents chose yes or no to attend, we were kinda swapping some kids out. That swapping was us extending that, and so we're, we're basically saying that, based on the data, so it's kinda hard to say what number, but based on that data, we're gonna stay true to that data. And, and typically, the students, you know, MAP in particular gives you a predictor, and the predictor is like, within like ninety-five percent confidence um reliability on the data, it's gonna give you a very accurate predictor, so most likely, those same students that are, are in that prediction of not to pass or in that bubble, they're gonna be captured in that data. So what we just wanna make sure is that we hold true to the actual students that are identified in, in the metrics.
And so, again, like, prior to COVID, when we had the reduced budget, we were not a B-rated district. Post-COVID, with the plan that we have been applying, we were a B-rated district, but I'll also point to another data point. I seem to recall that our beginning-of-the-year data showed a lot less summer slide this past year. And so, like, again, make, I, we, we, we're using the word diluted, but I don't, I don't see it as diluted, I see it as we enriched more kids, more kids began the middle of the year with higher benchmark scores, and I just, I, I think that's an investment that's worthwhile, and I haven't heard a compelling argument, although I know this saves us the money, I haven't heard a compelling argument for. I haven't heard a compelling argument for why we should stop doing this thing that is benefiting the students.
I think one point that Dr. Perez made is that there are multiple treatments that are happening. And so the embedded intervention that's happening during the day with the forty five forty five, that is attributing to that success and has attributed to that B rating too. And so we can't just say that it's all from summer school. And so that's where it's, we're continuing to offer that intense during the day at every single campus, that treatment that's allowing our students to receive that intervention. They're not having to wait until summer to receive the intervention. So when we talk the systemic, that is systemic as well because all of the campuses have that built in intervention. So it's not saying that, that summer school is going away and therefore will lose that gain that we've gotten. We're saying that summer school is, there's no data that necessarily says that summer school is the case in point as to why we received that achievement.
And just to reiterate, pre-COVID, we did not have our HQIM, highly quality instructional materials. We actually started implementing, and you heard Dr. Betis, this is our second year of implementing Amplify, Eureka, and Carnegie. And our teachers are finally getting really good at it. And so pre-COVID, we were using our own state adopted textbooks with our curriculum department and teachers developing their own lessons. And so we moved into this very structured program that has the emphasis on first time instruction. We've always, as educators, as teachers, we always pour into first time instruction. However, when our teachers didn't have the resources, they were all on their own building their lessons. With this curriculum, now they have the right lessons for first time instruction. We have, and Ms. Westbrook's, you know, she's amazing now in instruction. Because we do have all these resources that are built in. We have our in-class data that then provides guidance for the interventions. We do burst and, you know, our principals here are much more well-versed on this. And, you know, I know we didn't, we were not happy when the law passed with House Bill forty five forty five that required a minimum of thirty instructional hours for these students. But our principals made it work. And so we can't pinpoint what was the defining factor. Was summer school the defining factor? Or was it our teachers being coached on the use of these instructional materials? And they have, I see our teachers nodding, they've had coaches in the classroom with them. Is it the quality of the materials? Is it the interventions that they have? Is it, you know, our leaders on our campus holding, you know, they know that there is a superintendent's constraint of, you know, implementing with fidelity this curriculum. So we have all of these inputs that we put in these past two years. We can't say which one is in fact the one that made the difference. What we can say is, summer school will not go away. Summer school will be targeted for those students that need it. We are committed to doing that and we're committed to doing what we're doing throughout the entire year. But we will not, as Mr. Ant has said, you know, we will not cut programming or funding to, at the expense of our students. However, we will continue to do, you know, what our teachers are doing, the training, the coaching, the materials, and focusing on first time instruction with just-in-time interventions and not waiting till summer school. The old way was, well, you failed, you're coming to summer school. And we had, one year we had up to five thousand kids in summer school and teachers. We couldn't find teachers. If you'll recall, we were paying a lot of money to try to convince teachers to come in and we still couldn't get the best teachers. So now our teachers have the ability to work with small groups on what they need. And we will not let students fail. I know, you know, I, I see our principals in the audience and Dr. Betis, you can talk more, so much more about those resources that we have. And it's not just our, you know, star principals, it's everyone that's in this work. All of our leaders are in this work. They can talk to you about the curriculum, they can talk about the interventions, the built-in interventions, and the expectations they have of, you know, themselves and their teachers.
I do find the curriculum argument compelling. And I guess I had forgotten about forty five forty five.
I have one more for you. So when you're quantifying this, right? So we're, we're looking at a million, million and a half reduction for summer school. But that same money is saving us, the interventionists on campus, providing that intervention every day. Because we've had to go through our, our manning tables and trying to figure out, and we kept saying, we cannot reduce our, our people that are impacting children. And so summer school is what, fifteen days, twenty days? But this, that money goes towards, I'd rather protect having those highly qualified interventionists that are bell to bell working with our kids. So that, that, I don't want to cut anything.
Thank you. I, I wanted to hear comments from Mr. Banks. I think you were trying to speak and then Trustee Correa.
Yes, ma'am. I actually was going to speak towards what Dr. Hinojosa spoke to. I know that Dr. Perez spoke to the reduction of the summer school budget. And Dr. O spoke to how we are intervening during the day, how we are accelerating during, during the day. However, one of the main focuses on, on our campus, as I'm sure all of our campuses, is that initial instruction. We want to do everything that we can to minimize the number of students that need to attend summer school. And then based on areas that we can continue to grow in, there are opportunities to continue to deepen ELA, to continue to deepen math strategies. And with our backwards planning, with our Get Better Faster and our instructional coaching, and so that we can really strengthen that initial instruction that we, so that our teachers, as they deliver that, it gives our scholars the best opportunities throughout the year to be successful so that they don't need summer school. But of course, as you said, not eliminating summer school, but ensuring that we take advantage of all of our opportunities bell to bell so that we are strategically targeting those students that need to attend.
Thank you. Trustee Adams, I can give you a, a perfect example. My own kid benefited from these targeted interventions and also attended the crazy summer school with four thousand kids. And the difference in the instruction and, and just the effect was so much greater with, with this targeted instruction. It's, so I, I personally seen the benefit. And, and I, I want to make a comment, I don't know, it, we've kind of touched on it. And, and Dr. H, you kind of touched on it. You know, correlation, what's the statement? Correlation doesn't imply causation. But I, I have an issue with us not knowing why we are a B rated district. Why do we not know that at this point?
We do know why we were a B rated district. Number one is our teachers and our campus leaders. We came back with a vengeance. We came back, and especially in January, when, you know, we, we all came to the realization that the fall, we were just kind of paused as a district. I'll be very transparent. In January, we said, it is time. And it wasn't bringing the cavalry. It was talk to our principals, talk to our teachers. And we knew, under the former accountability system, we knew that our students, because of where they had been, that the most important piece for us to do was to grow our students. And it was taking our MOY data last year and understanding where our kids were. And I can tell you, every single teacher, every single principal printed out their reports and they knew where every single student was. And it was to take those resources and just sit with our kids every single day. And we know, like, summer school was great. But when you looked at our data and we had a few slides, I think it was at our August meeting, and it wasn't, it didn't show that there, you know, wasn't any improvement because our kids at our ELY, our kids had made so much growth. So by the time we got the STAR results, we were already celebrating because we knew what that predictor was saying. But we do know it was our teachers and it was taking those resources. We had just been using them for three months, six months, and it was just grabbing on tight and working with our kiddos, day in and day out, that first instruction, pulling those kids out, using those resources, and it was just good old fashioned teaching. This year, I think you heard Dr. Betis say, our numbers are looking really good in, in, in our MAP data and the growth that they have done. But we also know we have a new test with constructed responses that our kids, our teachers taught that. But it's new and foreign to them. We also have a new accountability system. So I know we've talked about it at this table before. I don't want you all to think that if we fall back from that B, it's not because we didn't try. It's not because the teachers weren't there. It wasn't because the leaders weren't there doing Saturday school. I know we talked about Saturday school. We did it. It's just a new test with a new accountability system that the measures have not even been set. We don't know, the teachers didn't know. We don't know what we're shooting for. We don't know if a seventy is a good grade or a bad grade. So we do know what made the difference. We know that it was our teachers, it was their determination, it was the new materials and it was implementing it. And this year, we're so much stronger and better. But we don't know. Like, I can sit here and you can ask every single principal, they've gotten results already. You know, they're looking at it, they know quote unquote likely pass, the cone of uncertainty and likely not to pass. But you know what? The state won't even set those until September. And so we're sitting here, you know, we know we did our best and we know they gave the best.
And I'm, I'm not discount, I, I know everybody has worked really hard and maybe I just misunderstood. But when you were talking, you were saying, maybe it was this, maybe it was that. And if someone was to come and ask me, you know, it would be great for me to say, yeah, this, it was X, Y, and Z, and this is what we did to get us to that grade. Because if we don't know that, then how are we going to continue that, I guess?
I think one of the things that I've shared is like I've changed my tactics quarterly because you never know which action is going to impact that aha moment that shifts the change in behavior. And I think what we're hearing is we've got ongoing curriculum, programs, forty five forty five and initiatives that all impacted our growth. But we don't know exactly which one gave us the greatest impact. And we don't know that it was, or we also don't know that it wasn't, summer school. But I would think that as we continue to use those programs throughout the day, bell to bell, as Dr. Banks shared with us, as we continue to do that, to me, summer school will naturally decrease itself. So I don't want to see us decreasing it because we got to save money. I want us to decrease it because we don't need it.
Absolutely.
You know, and that has naturally, through our other interventions, decreased itself. So I don't want to prematurely remove something that we don't know whether it did or did not impact. That, 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 that's my struggle with this decision.
President Durant, one thing, along the same lines of that conversation, Dr. Perez hit on this, is one thing that we know that's not going away are Title I funds, which we know that is, it's a huge lever in how we support students. Typically with Title I dollars, we're either expending those dollars on personnel, services, or resources. And, and Dr. Hinojosa said it too, like Dr. Perez is one example. She's held tutorials and different types of camps for her students outside the school day. We have a lot of our incredible leaders that are, that are creating those type of scenarios for students. So it's not only happening within the school day, but they're also, our teachers and our, and our staff are going over and beyond to make that happen outside the school day as well. Again, leveraging our Title I support that, that our schools have to be able to continue to go over and beyond for students. I just wanted to also put that in there. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. And the sake of time, I'll take one more pro and one more con for this, from any board member that has any more comments and then we need to move on. Anybody? It's Westbrook's.
Thank you. Okay, so our next topic that we wanted to bring back is the at-risk counselors at the elementary. And I turn it over to the award-winning Dr. Owalbi. President Durant, members of the board and Dr. Hinojosa, good evening. I did want to touch base and give a gentle reminder that this proposed reduction is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I'm giving that as a general reminder because we will still have a, a year to discuss or to plan accordingly as we work through this budget reduction. As of, uh, right now, all elementary schools have a minimum of one counselor. An at-risk counselor is added if the, if the campus has the at-risk numbers of students and or mobility rate and or different factors in their school. And that's what happens at this time. However, as we met as a team, we did look, as Dr. Perez said before, we did look at our manning table and we needed to decide where we can make some reduction. Not that the person is not needed on campus, because I'm going to be very honest with you. I fought three years for this, for this at-risk counselor. I was that one, okay? I was that one. But I have also that one that will say that in this case, ensuring that we have an elementary school counselor, one for every campus, and with allotment of having two and an enrollment of nine hundred or above can satisfy the needs of our campus. In a campus like mine, which is Bamo Elementary School, I do have the supplemental funds that is as needed with my mobility rate, with the number of students that are needing services. I can provide that at a campus allotment on my campus. And many other schools in elementary, when we did our discussions, they too, if it's needed, can also add that at-risk counselor if they need. The counselor right now, of course, if you have two on your campus, you may split primary, intermediate, and or depending on what's needed on your campus. But with that reduction, it will, of course, knowing that we have a thirty-five million dollar deficit on the way, I do want to make sure that we understand that if this person is eliminated, we do have resources to strengthen on our campus. In elementary school, we do have the Quaver curriculum that every campus does with fidelity. Teachers provide that instruction to our kids where they are seeing social emotional videos and our talks in the classroom so that they can have a better understanding of how they can respond to what you just heard our area supes talk about in the code of conduct, which is in building what to say when someone approaches you, the difference in how to speak or walk away, different breathing techniques that we have in the pre-K and that we move up on my campus, all the way to fifth grade. And our teachers are doing a really good job with that too. I know you may say, okay, we're giving more to the teachers. But you also have to remember that you have to reach them before you can teach them. And that starts in the classroom as well. So we did want to bring that proposal as in, yes, we will be eliminating or reducing the at-risk counselor at the elementary level. But we will still have a counselor on each campus. Any campus that is above nine hundred will, can have an additional counselor. And of course, the campuses that have that supplemental Title I and or state comp ed money, they can also, I want to say purchase a person, but you can add an additional staff member on your campus. We have a budget meeting every year. We come in with the committee, with the cabinet, and we come in. And when we have a need, Ms. Westbrook's, Ms. Kennedy, they come in and they try to find it. They'll say, okay, you can pull from this account and you can pull for this account if this is what's needed on your campus. So we also have that autonomy when we go to our budget meetings to ensure if this is, um, um, a need that we have, that it can be serviced as well.
Thank you. So I think I was probably the main one struggling with this because I remember the same late night painstaking budget conversations, pre-ESR funds for our at-risk campuses needing that second AP. And, um, I don't even, did this, wasn't this even before ESR? When we had this at-risk counselor added? Right. And so I'm like, okay, now we're eliminating something that we did a while ago that is truly a need at those specific campuses that have high mobility, that have a higher at-risk rating than our other campuses. And I don't know, I, I just feel like the sooner you catch a child and intervene, I'd rather lose a counselor at a high school than at elementary. Because at an elementary is where you have an opportunity to identify and give them the help and the resources that they need at an early age so that they can be successful moving on. But I may have been the only one that had concerns with this. So in the sake of time, if I am, we can move on.
Well, I have concerns about it, but I think that your description of the Quaver curriculum is compelling to me because I don't think anybody knows a student as well as the teacher does. And that that is really an effective relationship to pick up on those problems and give kids the tools they need to work their way through.
And we're going to have to, we have two of our star elementary principals here that don't seem to have a problem with this. And neither do my educators, colleagues on the board, so.
And you have another star over there with McNabb.
So let's, let's move on.
Okay, we are moving on to our next item. And that is the SIMs clerks at the middle schools. And so we'll turn that back over to Dr. Banks to walk us through that discussion.
Thank you. I'm President Durant, trustees, superintendent Hina Hosa, and cabinet members. My, first I want to start out just by saying I've taken the opportunity to be a part of the budget committee very seriously. As a resident of the district, as a parent to three children within the district, I'm very invested in both the short and the long-term interest of our district and the hard, hard decisions that we're faced with at this time. So first I'd like to just talk with you about the opportunity to increase the operational efficiency of middle schools for the 202425 school year through the elimination of the SIMs clerk position, but merging those responsibilities with the registrar. So at Spring Leadership Academy, I've actually been operating in that capacity for the last four years. And so my registrar embodies all of the characteristics of both a registrar as well as a SIMs clerk. And I know that as a school of choice, we are a little bit different in our comprehensives. So to make sure that I was accurate in this assessment as we worked as a team, just making sure to confer with the comprehensive middle school principals. And we are aligned and in agreement with this recommendation. Both roles are non-instructional data positions and they're responsible for the accuracy of that data, specifically when we're talking about PIMS. PIMS being the Public Education Information Management System. What would allow this strategic move to take place is that there is a ebb and flow to the school year. And so with that ebb and flow, when we talk about our registrars, they are registering students typically at the beginning of the year, beginning of the semester, end of the year. They're also supporting during the grade reporting periods. For our SIMs clerks, in a, they are ensuring that the accuracy of the coding is correct on the campuses. And this is happening during our, our snapshot periods in both the fall and the spring semester. What allows, also what allows this move to be able to take place is the leadership on the campus. So your principals, who are the project managers, who are the facilitators of this work, they are able to ensure that this process is collaborative on the respective campuses and that individuals are cross-trained to support this taking place and to, to ensure that the act, the coding and the, to ensure that the coding and all other Is are dotted and Ts are crossed to make sure that that compliance is taking place. And so again, this has been a collaborative process. And, and speaking with those comprehensive principals, they're in agreement with this recommendation. As you can see on the slides, at the elementary school level, they have the attendants as well as the SIMs clerks, who the SIMs clerks perform those registers duties. At the middle school and the high schools, they both have three positions on their non-instructional data team. However, at the high schools, they're much larger and they're able to do it with those three staff members. So highlighting that this is an opportunity for us to be more efficient and be able to still ensure compliance during this consideration for budget reduction.
Okay, so I'm going to ask my veteran colleagues. There was a time when we eliminated SIMs clerks in the past and we actually had an internal audit that recommended we put them back. At that time, we also had complaints from the registers and the, I don't know if it was the attendance clerks or the secretaries about the amount of workload they had to pick up when we eliminated SIMs clerks. And this was maybe six, seven years ago. So are we not setting ourselves up for that same concern?
So it's my understanding that at the high school level, which of course is the time of graduation and the, we want to ensure the accuracy of grades, transcripts. The SIMs clerks will remain at that level. At the middle school level, there's opportunity for it because as I, I stated, it's a collaborative process. So the registrar who is performing the SIMs clerk's duties, the coding to ensure that accuracy with PIMS, is doing so in conjunction, in collaboration with other campus leaders who are responsible for those areas. So for example, the registrar will be, it does and meets with the campus emergent bilingual contact. And as they are reviewing the data, they're both looking at that to ensure that it is accuracy for compliance purposes. When we are looking at our special education students for coding, the same thing. They are in collaboration and concert, meeting with those individuals on campus to review that data. And so it's the principal of the campus who is ensuring that they facilitate this process because ultimately they are responsible for everything that takes place on the campus.
And we also went on to online registration. We're back, being a veteran myself, back in the day. Everything was not online. Everything was paper. And because I was a part of that team registering at Cloughton Middle School when I was the principal.
Do you remember last time we got rid of SIMs clerks? It was a problem.
Yes, ma'am. I remember. I remember.
So that's not going to be a problem this time?
Okay. Because remember, we're just focusing on the middle schools right now. And I want to say this 2425. This is also a 2425, um, proposal. So just remembering that, knowing that we were all paper back then.
Good point.
And that's what it was.
That, that helped. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask the three of them to stay just in case there are some more questions that are coming up. We have a few more slides. And just to the point that Dr. Jensen mentioned earlier, we do have several rock star principals in the audience. So if there's more questions or if you want to get some additional feedback.
Can they go ahead and stand and be recognized?
Yes.
Please. Thank you for being here.
Are any of you sitting back there thinking, I wish they would have said this? Do you have any other comments or are you comfortable?
Okay. Ms. Warford, is your little one asleep?
Almost.
That's why she couldn't stand up.
To their points, especially surrounding Amplify and Eureka. I, I have personally trained the principals on in-class intervention. We did that this year. And I know our curriculum team has also done a great job of supporting us through that. In my opinion, and with the results that we've gotten on our campus, the interventions that we provide during the day are much more powerful and they're much more systematic. And so we've seen great results with that. We did pilot Amplify, so we do have a little bit more data than some of the other campuses. And our data has, our reading data has increased since she was a pre-K. She was actually one of the first ones to go through Amplify and, and pre-K and Kender. So we are actually watching a cohort of students that are now entering second grade. And their reading level as they are leaving first grade and entering second grade, we're at about 83% on or above grade level. And those interventions and those systematic ways that the teachers are implementing that curriculum with fidelity is the key. So I, I do agree with my colleagues 100%.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll go to the next item that was a concern, and that was the transportation beyond two miles. So of course, we've discussed before that the district only receives funding for the transportation that's provided for our students who live beyond two miles or for our students that are in an approved hazardous zone. So that's the only funding that we receive. So anything that's within that two-mile radius, that's being funded through the district's budget. Also, what's really important to note is that for any students that have special needs, and just as I mentioned, those on those hazardous routes would still be eligible for transportation. This proposal is to be implemented in 2425 because we know it will take a considerable amount of time and effort to ensure that we've communicated effectively with our community, given opportunities for input, and then had some opportunities to also make sure that we're being as strategic as possible with the bus routes and all of that to ensure that it is executed in the best way possible. So by realigning and going back to the two-mile radius, that does have an opportunity to save possibly over $1.5 million. We do know that it impacts about 7,200 of our students. It would eliminate 40 bus routes, which also helps us with our costs associated with the wear and tear on our, on our buses. It would eliminate 28 vacancies because though we have the routes and though we are transporting within the one-mile radius, or excuse me, those that are beyond the one-mile radius, it's, we don't have the drivers. And so that's what's contributing to a lot of the bus arrival issues that we're having. And, and those are, have been continuing. And we know there's a nationwide shortage with bus drivers. So this would actually leave us close to fully staffed based on a two-mile radius. So that's something that would solve some issues in and of itself. So I know there was some discussion about whether or not we would lose our students if we were to go to the two-mile radius or if it would have an impact on our attendance if we were to go to a two-mile radius. And so this is some historical data. If you look back to 2012, 13, as I lovingly refer to as the good old days, when our attendance was over 95% in the district. And so we were at that two-mile radius. So 2013, 14, we were just under 95%. 2014, 15, we were at 94.58%. So in 2015, 16, that was when we began expanding our transportation offerings and we picked up students that were beyond 1.5 miles to their schools. And you can see that in 2015, 16, our attendance took a really small little dip in 2015, 16, and went up just a little bit in 2016, 17. But if you go forward to 2017, 18, that's the year when we actually, we bought the new fleet of buses and we went to the one-mile radius. Our attendance actually dropped that year. And we saw that drop continue in 2017, 18, 2018, 19. 2019, 20 is an anomaly year. That's the year that COVID began in March. And so for the last two, six weeks of the year, if the kids showed up on camera, they were, we had that alternate attendance. If they showed up on camera, we could count them present. And so that is not a typical year. That, that's an inflated year of attendance in 2019, 20. So move forward to 2021, that's the full year of COVID where we had the remote instruction and some of our students were on campus. Our attendance was at just under 94%. And then last year was the year where we talked a lot about attendance when we didn't quite hit the 90% mark with our attendance. It has gone back up a little bit this year at the 91%. But to say this is to look back historically and to come forward, there's no evidence, there's no data that says that our student attendance is impacted by the amount of, the radius of our transportation that's being offered.
Do we include the opening of charters in these years? Because prior to, most recently, that option wasn't there.
The opening of charters would impact our enrollment, not necessarily our attendance. So the attendants are the students that are enrolled in Spring ISD and how often they're actually coming to spring.
I'm more concerned, are you done, President Durant? Okay. I'm more concerned about the safety issues and also the traffic around schools with dropping off and picking up kids. Geometrically, and I did this in the past, we have more elementary schools than we have at middle schools and high schools. And that, with the little six-year-old is much more likely to be within that impacted problem with the one-mile versus one-and-a-half mile versus two-mile. And we're expecting a first grader to walk a mile or walk with a sibling for a mile. I, it just, that's where I'm just highly upset about this. I really feel that if we have to go to this, that I think we're going to have to really look at the huge outweighed impact on the elementary schools versus the middle schools and the high schools. And we're going to have to do some kinds of adjustment, adjustments.
So just a comment, I, I was in Spring ISD when we were at a half a mile picking up at Link. We picked up at a half a mile. So I was at Link Elementary, which is a neighborhood school, and I had eight buses, okay, in the neighborhood. And then we went from there, I went to Cloughton and we went to the two-mile. Okay? So from point five to two is huge. Yeah. Yeah. From across the street, yes. So some solutions that principals had to do at the time when we, when we came together and knew that this was going to happen was we had to talk to the parents because we had to think about how many parents that was going to impact. Was it 10? Was it, was it 10 families? Was it 15 families? Was it 16 families? So when we were at Cloughton, we were talking to our families and they were saying, oh, well, what solutions or what can we provide for you? That's when we had a lot of those parents getting those fans and then they were getting the carpool, remember shuttle runs? We did a lot of that at Cloughton. We did a lot of carpooling at Cloughton. And it was the parents coming together because we had town halls asking them what solutions they had. I can talk about my West Door community that I have behind Bammell, okay? Which right now, we're at, you know, the, the one-mile room. I do have a lot of bikers and I do have a lot of students that walk, okay? And you don't realize, but sometimes the parents are like, I'm calling. I'm like, hey, you're not here. They're like, oh, no, 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 I'm late, can't, you know, she can walk home by herself. You know me, in my heels, I'm gonna walk the child, okay? And you don't realize that it's 17 blocks or one mile. So now we're going to two, let's add another. Kids will, and parents will make sure that they're gonna be safe. And if not, they will let us know. We have after-school programs, which is 21st century. We have after-school buses, that activity buses for those students. So it's just coming together with those parents because it won't be all, it will be some that will have some difficulties. And we can work through those difficulties as a community, as a principal group, talking to families about what they need and getting that. Because I had to go through it when I was at Link and Clotin and here at BAML. Yes, at BAML.
Absolutely. Dr. O, I've lived through when we were busing all kids. I sat on this board when we went through two miles.
Yes.
I lived through the pain and drama of that and broke down in tears on my way to work when I was watching a kindergarten, kindergarten or walking down Ella in the dark with no sidewalks at night. And how difficult it was to even get back to this one mile. It took us several years to even get back to the one mile. And I'm real not comfortable with saying, thank you, community, for passing our $800 million bond. We're gonna buy some new buses and, oh, now your kids have gotta walk. I, 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 I am not in support. I don't think it's safe. I agree with Dr. Jensen. I don't think it's the right time and I'm not, and I'm not comfortable with it.
And I understand, but on an elementary campus, we do not let kindergartners walk by themselves. They have to be second grade on up and we have to have parent permission and we have to make sure it's safe. A kindergartner, pre-K, first grade will not walk by themselves. We will hold the child.
And then we also talked about as, minus third grade.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
But we also talked about as a committee, you know, like some of our campuses have Koala Care, the, the importance that it, that it's gonna be to make sure that every campus has some form of early childcare and after-school care available to parents. Because we do know we serve a working population and parents aren't able to be at the bus stop and have that opportunity. But yeah, I absolutely hear that. We've had that conversation as a committee and just looking at how can we, as campuses, provide opportunities for parents.
And Rest Assure is just not my campus. I can talk about any, any, I can talk for any principal here on an elementary campus. We are not gonna allow a primary student to walk home.
Thank you. Okay, so the next and last item that was a concern that came up on Thursday was about the athletics budget and quite frankly, why wasn't athletics listed in the proposed budget reductions? And so what we did, as mentioned earlier on the slide before, was that we matched the reduction for performing and visual arts to that for athletics. And what we'll do is we'll go back with that number that's proposed to happen in 2425 and look at all of our stipends as they're compared to our neighboring districts. And we do have that data readily available to us through the TASB pay studies that we've been doing over the last few years. We'll look at also the number of stipends that are provided per sport and then just look at the athletic budget as a whole for efficiencies to ensure that we can get to that equitable reduction amount for athletics as well.
So I have sort of two questions. One, it occurs to me that like, equal is not necessarily equitable. And so a $342,000 hit to a $1 million budget isn't the same as a $342,000 hit to a $2 million budget. And so just in terms of talking about this, I'd like to talk not about having equal amounts, but equitable amounts. And so if that means we're looking at a percentage of those budgets, I, I think, again, in the interest of being equitable, we need to do that. The other thing that sort of has occurred to me is are there any opportunities for the programs that we're looking at for 2425 to be piloted in 2324? Is there, for example, a middle school that is, would be really well-suited to lose their Sims clerk in the next school year? And give it a dry run and see how it works before we roll that out for all of the comprehensive middle schools? I think that's, there may be an opportunity for some extra savings there. Also, when we, if we are forced to do that in 2425, have sort of a playbook to do that by, so those were my comments.
And we had had that discussion as well that for, in 2324, if it's a position that we know is slated to go away in 2425, if it came vacant, we wouldn't refill it. We wouldn't post for that position. So that would be happening through attrition and we would just close the vacancy. So the plan would already be in place or as you said, that will be the campus that'll help us develop the plan for those campuses that are coming along behind them. And so as far as the athletics budget versus the performing and visual arts budget, they are fairly comparable in size. I believe athletics is just over a million and PVA is just below a million in their discretionary budgets. The one thing that I do want to say is that we have invested heavily in our performing and visual arts program over the last several years and particularly with our SRR funds where we infused $5 million into performing and visual arts. And during the budget cuts where we were, for two years in a row, we were taking 5% off the top with all of our departmental budgets, including athletics. But performing and visual arts, we only took that cut one time and then we held them steady. So I definitely understand the equity versus equality and we'll, we'll take a look at that and just make sure that it is more of an equitable cut, but it could possibly end up that the athletic cut may not be as much as PVA if we get deep into that.
Right, fair, fair, but yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, then if there are no more questions on the list, then I wanted to bring the preliminary budget one more time because this evening is where we need to get the okay from the bud, from the board members to move forward with this preliminary budget so that we can begin the process of developing the budget that will come forward on June 27th for the public hearing. So I just want to take a moment and walk us through the preliminary budget that's listed here. And so the only change that's happened from what you saw on Thursday evening is the fact that in the first line with state revenue, I had mentioned that with the legislation that House Bill 3 had passed and that safety allotment did go into effect. It was on the governor's desk on May 30th and I didn't check today to see whether it was signed, but it did go to the governor. And that allotment is a part of the budget, the state budget that was passed. And so for spring, our additional allotment is $653,000. So that's included in our revenue on the state revenue side, but then it's also included here on our expenditure side because the additional revenue that we receive has to be used towards additional safety and security measures. And so recall that House Bill 3 is the, the bill that had the requirement of a security officer on every single campus. Well, $15,000 per campus is not going to get us to a security officer on every single campus. What this would do with the cost of benefits is it could potentially add nine more officers and then maybe we could figure out how to strategically place those nine officers. But that would be a decision that would be made by the board. But what we need to do here is just account for that revenue and that expenditure as we develop our, our budget for next year. So with the proposed budget reductions that would take place in 2324, that totals 9.2 million. With the House Bill 3 and with the police officer starting salary of 60,000, our total additional items would be a negative of 7.9, just under $8 million. So we would still have a deficit budget of 25.3 million that we need to talk through and work through before we pass our 2425 budget. But as we know, with the offset of that last year of SRR funds, we would be looking at a projected deficit of just over $3 million. So I'm gonna pause and take us back to the list of 2324 proposed reductions and just make sure that we're all on the same page and that we can get that guidance on next steps.
I want to just say thank you. And I know it's late and I appreciate the principals being here so late. I know we left the work session with me saying I had six concerns. I'm actually down to one, so thank you, helped.
I will say I have no concerns about the 2324 proposed budget reductions.
Are you doing just a little poll here instead of a vote?
I'm kind of trying to get a consensus so that our CFO will know what direction to take.
I, I feel that I do not have any serious concerns.
I'm okay to move forward as well.
My only question was the work groups. Were these six different individual work groups or did you guys all kind of work together on different topics? Just, you know, mixed, matched?
It started out. It started out, everybody was in a group. And then by the last two, we all kind of morphed together as a big group, talking through because sometimes what impacts elementary will impact middle, that will impact high school as well. So then we all had to get in the, in the group and make sure that we were doing things strategically and not in silos.
And we went back to our colleagues as well and made sure that they understood and, you know, because we want to make sure everyone, it's like one band, one sound, and they all understood the why and that we, we reflected, you know, their thoughts, concerns, and came back. So it was, it was, it was a lot of work.
I'm glad you said that, Dr. Perez, because I did want to give them some extra kudos because we have met a lot over the last, the last couple of months. And the principals have worked really hard. And so you hear us come in, present the information and say, this is what came out of the committee. But there's a lot of discussion that's happening and there's a lot of passion that's in those rooms. And it's abundantly clear that every single person in that room has our student outcomes and our students top of mind as we're going through those discussions. So it has not been easy, by no stretch of the word. But a lot of work has been accomplished and we have a lot of work to accomplish in order to make sure that we set spring up to be fiscally responsible over the next decade, to be perfectly honest with you. Because if, if we don't make these tough decisions now, we'll be facing some much tougher decisions in the future.
I want to echo what President Durant just said about how much we appreciate the work you and the other principals did. The, the thing that's happening here is that it's important, like that, those conversations happen and the public doesn't see those conversations. And so it's important for us to have this conversation publicly and to hash it out publicly for the record so that people can see what we had to do in order to make this happen. So again, thank you. I really appreciate what you all did, so thank you.
And I also want to reiterate, President Durant, I was you in these meetings because I went through that 29 reduction of staff at Clotin when I was a principal.
2011.
Okay, I was there. So I was the one who probably pushed back the most and asked the why and how can we and what's our plan and what are we gonna do? And we cannot come before you and the community without a, a plan A, B, C, D, and E. So we did work really, really hard because I was that one and I wanted you all to know that.
Thank you. I'm gonna have a hard time going to two miles. So that, that's my angst right now. I can't support that. I'll pray about it.
And you might have, you might have mentioned this, but I noticed that the, the budget committee recommendations is 9.2 million there, but in the presentation it was 13.3.
9.2 million that would be implemented in 2324. The additional cost or cost savings would be in 2425.
Ms. Newhouse?
I echo my board trustees. It's obvious you all did an awesome job in planning this and working on it. And I really appreciate everyone's hard work. I am going to say that yes, I could go along with this budget except for I gotta, like Justin Durant, my, my babies. The two-mile, but I see that it's in 2425. So I'm gonna pray that between 23 and 24, that we're gonna find some way of being able to help my babies before 24 happens. So let's, I would go on and say yes for this. And that's what I'm gonna look for and scrape and try to find for next 2425.
Okay, so I'm gonna end the way we began. And that's just reminding everyone of the fiscal cliff that's ahead and the fact, just as we heard our assistant superintendents of school say earlier today, the work doesn't stop here. And so what we're planning to do is to veer off into some ad hoc committees that will work on not only the budget reduction side of the equation, but the increase in revenue side as well. So our communications team is working on our marketing plan. And so there's a lot more, a lot more work that has to be done between now and the 2425 budget. And I'm with Ms. Newhouse. We are going to hope and pray, but we're also going to plan for the best as we, as we move forward through this budget process. So if there are no further questions, then I think Ms. Kennedy's still there and we will, as we say all the time in finance, we'll rock and roll starting tomorrow. And we'll have our public hearing on June 27.
Yes, I'd like to thank our principals. Thank you so much.
We do have several other items on the agenda, but do you want to release your principals?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to, you know, reiterate thank you to our principals. And then just a quick reminder, there is an ad hoc committee that just went into effect. And they have, what, is it two weeks? I know I sent the board that information that it's time for us to really act and communicate with that committee. They're gonna be focusing on public education. They didn't specifically say funding, but it is time for us to once again start writing our state legislatures, specifically that education committee. I know our teachers are here and they've done an amazing job also communicating because it is our last opportunity. Of course, this work won't happen until after our budget is passed, but as you all are saying, you know, we've got to, you know, take all, you know, avenues that are out there. And so it's time for us to once again get into our writing campaigns and ask for support of public education, support of increasing our per pupil allotment because we really need the help. We'll work, you know, in spring, but we also need the state to support us. And I'll send that information out again so you all have it top of your email. And we have specific state representatives that are on this committee for us to start working with. I know we're looking at the, at the time, it is 11 o'clock, you know. Our senior leadership team, you know, of course, we're here. We will stay here. If any of our other staff members that are here, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay. I know we've got several items. Our chief of school is gonna be presenting and then items that are just in the consent agenda. So you're welcome to head on home so you can, we can all be back tomorrow.
Not gonna reflect badly because you left at 11 o'clock.
Senior leadership team, you're here. You're welcome to stay if you want to stay, but please don't, do not feel like you have to stay.
Because the next thing is the medical plan.
Okay, do y'all need a break? Okay, we're gonna take a quick, two, three-minute bathroom break. Well, Winford and I switched seats too because medical plan's up next.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. And our next item is the 2324 medical plan rates. We discussed on Thursday evening and had our third party vendor from Universal Benefit Consortium here to answer questions. And so this evening, I'm seeking the board's approval of the new premium rates that would take place with the 2324 plan year.
I will now entertain a motion, uh, for the 2324 proposed medical rate plan rates.
All right, I move that the board of trustees approve the medical plan rates and propose plan changes for the 2023-2024 plan year, which begins on September 1st, 2023.
Second motion.
All right, we have a first, we have a motion by, uh, Trustee McDaniel and a second by Trustee Newhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing now? None? I'll call for the vote. We're voting for the medical plan. I thought you were abstaining. Are you, are you, you're voting?
I am.
Okay. All right. Let the record reflect that we have six, uh, four, one abstaining. Motion passes.
Did we ask for any additional information on this from Thursday? Oh, I think we're good, right? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of schools, Dr. Miguel Perez.
Good evening again. Uh, tonight I have three items. The first one will begin with a interlocal clinical placement site agreement with the Allegheny College of Maryland. And, uh, the idea is that, uh, this, uh, college of Maryland is requesting to partner with Spring ISD to act as a placement site for nursing students who are acquiring their bachelors, masters, or doctoral degrees. There is no cost to the district for any of this, uh, for this agreement. The only commitment is for our director of nursing and health services, which her name is Dr. Thomas. But she's in full agreement and support with this. She would have to oversee the work of the quote unquote interns who will come and do some work, uh, with us. And hopefully this could lead to, uh, one of these nurses staying and maybe staying in Spring ISD.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Madam President, I move that the board of trustees approve the clinical placement site agreement with Allegheny College of Maryland. Is there a second? Second. Well, she's been made by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee McDaniel to approve the clinical placement site agreement with Allegiant College of Maryland. Is there any discussion? I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So I'll proceed. The next item has to do with a, uh, a memorandum of understanding with the Harris County Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, also known as JJAEP, for the 2324 academic school year. And we would like to, uh, propose entering into a contract with the Harris County Juvenile Board to reserve seven discretionary seats or spaces for placement of students in the JJAEP. And we also have access to, uh, other mandatory seats for students who are placed by the court system or the, the criminal system.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. Do I hear a motion?
Madam President, I move that the board of trustees approve the memorandum of understanding with the Harris County Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the board approve the memorandum of understanding with Harris County Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program. Is there any discussion?
Did you say seven discretionary places?
Uh, yes, seven discretionary.
The summary I have here says three.
Yeah, that's a error. Um, if you look at the supporting document, um, that's in the back, there's a chart, uh, with very small numbers. It's based on the actual number of, of incidents that, uh, students have been actually, uh, have committed. And then we get that certain number of seats because they service the entire region.
So when students are referred to JJAEP, they're not typically referred for the entire year, are they?
So typically between 60 and 90, and we do have some that may be mandatory that can be there for the entire academic year, depending on the, uh, and we're talking about more of your Title V offenses that are very egregious, right? Now, for the discretionary ones, uh, these are not for the full year. They're for a, uh, set, uh, assigned the number of days. And so like we had a, a huge disruption and the student potentially hit a staff member, right? So that's an egregious, uh, incident that could lead to a discretionary pending charges from the police. And so until it becomes a mandatory one.
So this is an increase that I think we talked about from the previous year. But we only pay for what we use. If we don't, we don't pay for all seven if we don't use all seven. We only are responsible for what we use.
We hold the seats and if we use them, then we pay for on a pair, per pupil, um.
Yeah, and I know we had dropped down to three, but then I think we ran into some issues where we needed more. And it cost us more where it would have, would not have had we, you know, saved or reserved more.
So is this number enough, what we're asking for this year?
It's a good question. I think we saw a chart on the impact where they settled on the seven. And it also compared other districts. Do y'all remember that? Thank you, Gabby. 107 in our binder.
Yeah, and the new binder is 93?
Okay. Yeah.
I was comparing the percent of referrals we have to other school districts. And it looked like we are, you know, pretty much in the middle.
So then what's the difference between that chart, which shows seven? Well, that's, I guess, available. But then on page 97, it says we have 12 referrals. 12 high school referrals, 22 or 23.
They don't all sit, my understanding, they don't all necessarily sit there at the same time. So there may be that many referrals, but one kid goes in, does their 60 or 90 days and then comes out. And maybe another kid takes his place. That's other than that.
If a student has to, um, spend an entire year at JJAEP, are they eligible to return to their home campus the next year?
They are. They are, depending on the, the offense, but they typically are. Uh, unless they, they, if they commit something, then they're getting incarcerated, right?
Right, they go to jail.
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And the last item that I have also impacts, uh, the current work with the Student Code of Conduct. So this is, uh, an item about, um, approving a contract with, uh, SESI. And that stands for Specialized Education Services Incorporated. We know, uh, this, this company as, uh, they work here at our Ritchie Academy. And so, but spring is looking to, or proposed to enter into a contract with SESI to reserve seats for placement of students in our own DAEP, which is our, the name just, um, Discipline Alternative Education Placement Program, who may be removed from school for certain offenses. And so this is the one that when a student commits a discretionary or we have mandatories, we can immediately send them here without having to go through the whole process of the other one, which is our JJAEP for the more egregious ones.
I don't understand what we're voting on.
President Durant, this is a continuation, uh, a new MOU with Ritchie Academy. We used to know them as Camelot.
Camelot.
If you'll, uh, remember, um, the CEO, um, Dr. Carter, um, was formerly the CEO. They now sold the company over. We're still providing the same services, which is the staffing for Ritchie Academy, our own internal DAEP.
I thought we were going to staff it ourselves.
Well, we did look at potentially opening our own campus. But instead, we determined that this past year we would open Momentum and focus on tho, that program. And so we are asking that we continue this partnership with, um, the CE, CE, CE? Or SESI, I'm sorry, S-E-S-I, to continue to do Ritchie Academy.
I don't know if I'm the Lone Ranger, but I didn't realize Momentum impacted making this change at Ritchie.
Yeah, it's getting campuses standing, right? Seeking teachers. And for this, um, we need to plan and start early. It is staffing approximately 20 or so teachers that would be working with, you know, a behavior program. And so, um, it takes a, a good runway to get it up and going.
So is this still Camelot and they've just changed their name? Or is this a new vendor?
It is, well, it is in, under a name of a new vendor, but it's still the same people that we are working with.
So we have to make. When we opened Ritchie, the plan was five years before we were running it ourselves. How old is Ritchie?
It's probably six, seven years. And I know Dr. Bettis and, uh, the team did look at what would it take, um, to open our own DAEP program? We were just not quite ready to be able to launch that.
And staffing was a big concern as well because we're having a, a really difficult time with vacancies in our 43 campuses. And we know that there's a special staffing requirement for the DAEP. And with the, the nationwide teacher shortage, that was a big concern as well.
Thank you. Any other questions other than mine?
Did we have any issues with Camelot or now SESI? I mean, I guess not if we're asking to renew their contract.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't think they, well, I thought we did have issues.
That's why I'm asking, yeah.
I, I just recall that we did have issues and that was why we discussed, um, having, um.
Staffing it ourselves.
Yeah, we had a whole lengthy conversation about it. I remember because I, uh, I want to say in 2020, because I remember in 19, I went on a tour of the building and I didn't, I just, I was new and I didn't like what I saw. And I just thought maybe that's just the way they looked and acted. And I mean, I didn't, I didn't have enough to go on. But I remember when we came to the board meeting, we were talking about it. I thought, oh, okay, so it wasn't just me being new and not knowing. I did have some concerns, but if you have to make a decision, you know.
So this is a little blindsiding to me because I didn't know we had decided to continue with Camelot before this. Any other discussion?
I guess I'm just wondering what is, is there, is there a plan in place? Because you said the goal was five years. We're past five years. Are we working on a plan? What's the anticipated date or?
We did, as I shared with you, Dr. Bettis brought a plan. The challenge was the staffing. Because when you're looking at staffing for DAEP, it takes a special conduct teacher. It is not just a, you know, like we, um, have alternative certified teachers or DOI teachers. And so when we looked at the plan, plan was solid. The staffing was the issue. And, um, Dr. Bettis and his team, Dr. Olivo, they work closely with Ritchie Academy. I'm trying to recall the discussion back in 2020. I, I just don't recall it, but it is something that we have been looking at internally to be able to stand it up on our own. But it will take, you know, I know when we first looked at the budget that Dr. Olivo proposed, it was much greater than what we are paying, um, SESI, right? For us to stand it up, it was significantly more money. And, um, so we were looking at financial implications and staffing implications. And so we made the determination to pause and, um, go back to renegotiate this contract with, um, SESI or Camelot.
There aren't going to be a lot of good options for DAEP. That's one of the things that we do at HCD. We have our High Point campuses and as Superintendent says, it takes a special kind of teacher to, to work with those students and in that environment. So i- in an, in another five years, it's going to be, I imagine it'll be difficult to staff up for a DAEP. In our current climate, teachers are leaving regular campuses, so.
And I can tell you that Harris County Department of Ed, HCD, did approach us because they're looking to revise and revitalize their program, um, because a lot of districts have left. And so I did get a call and say, you know, can you commit to partnering with us? And I, I know the sentiments of the board. And it is just extremely difficult to find staff, good staff, to actually work with our students. And the reason we left HCD was because of instruction.
I fought three years and with two superintendents to get our own DAEP because I wanted our kids out of High Point.
And so knowing that, you know, uh, Dr. Bettis, Dr. Olivo have been working very closely with Ritchie Academy and making sure that, number one, you know, instruction is happening. Number two, the students are being serviced. We provide special education services there. We provide counseling services. We provide, uh, drug and alcohol, um, sessions for them. So we are definitely addressing the needs. And, um, you know, I, I hear the board's wishes to continue to, you know, explore this. As I said, when we looked at the proposal and, uh, Dr. Olivo had it all worked out, it was just going to be financially much more expensive than this contract. And the staff was going to be a big, uh, challenge for us. But we'll continue to explore and, and, um, and look at running our own internally.
So my apologies because I allowed way too much conversation without a motion on the floor, but it's late. Forgive me. Entertain a motion.
Sorry.
I will take discussion. Let's get the motion on the floor. It's my bad.
I, I move that the board of trustees approve the Ritchie Academy contract with Specialized Education Services of Texas Incorporated for the 2023-2024 school year.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the board approve the Ritchie Academy contract with the Special Education Services of Texas for the 2324 school year. Is there any discussion?
Sorry, yes. The previous contract, what was the number of students that we had versus this one? Because I see we've got 120.
So we are flat at 120. I know, uh, Dr. Bettis just met with them last week where they are agreeing to give us 10 additional seats for the same cost. Because they did know that we're looking to stand up our own and, you know, the partnership has been long lasting. It's something that we will add to the contract. Mr. Binkley knows that we need to write it into the contract because it's a gentleman's word. But if it's not written, it didn't, it's not going to happen. So the last negotiating meeting that we had was they would up, increase the seats to 130 and keep it at the same cost from last year.
And are we doing any sort of, kind of along the same veins that we were talking about with the targeted intervention in lieu of summer school? Are we doing anything like that for the kids that are in this program as well?
And they, they do, one of the things that we are running is a special summer school for them to continue their learning. Because nine times out of 10, the children, the young people, that get in trouble are also having academic difficulties. So, we specifically are running a summer school program for them. And then, just making sure that, you know, Ms. Walker, our Assistant Superintendent of High Schools is also in direct contact with the students so that they're not falling behind academically and they're getting the interventions needed.
No further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Any extensions? That's 5-4 and two extension, the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Perez. Perez. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation, Dr. Matthew Parisone.
Thank you, President Durant. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent and senior leadership team. This item is found on page 107 of your new binder. This is a memorandum of understanding between Spring I S D and Northwest Community Health. It is a renewal. So, we engaged with them a couple of years ago. And then, I, and based on the trustee's request, we did include some details below on that item summary, showing the success of that partnership. If you remember, the ambulance was donated last year. These work directly with our students at Winchee that are part of that E M T program. And we had 100% of the students pass their certification exam last year. And so, we, we are requesting a renewal of that M O U.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the memorandum of understanding with Northwest Community Health.
I second it.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees approve the memorandum of understanding for Northwest Community Health. Is there any discussion? Your light's on in there. All right. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Perez. I'll now inter- It's the same page. At this time, our next item, I'd like to recognize our General Counsel, Jeremy Brinkley.
Good evening. So, if you'll join me on page 135 of your packet, we have the proposed revisions to D C Local. I know we had significant conversation on this on Thursday evening. What you'll find in your packet tonight is one version of D C Local per that conversation on Thursday. And this version includes essentially the superintendent sole authority to make recommendations and the board's final authority for the employment of those positions that report directly to the superintendent as well as all assistant superintendent positions. And so, with that, like I said, I know there's a lot of discussion. Are there any questions?
I'll entertain a motion for the first reading.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of proposed revisions to board policy, D C Local.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Correa that the board approved the first reading for the proposed revisions of D C Local. Is there any discussion? All right. Everybody's lights left and on. It's getting late. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? That's 5-4, two opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. I believe it's still you, right? No, Mark. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Moran.
Hey, President Durant, I'm on page 147. I'm bringing back-
Operations officer.
Sorry. I'm bringing back the aerial easement. So, I'm going to share this again, I think, yeah. Did have a couple of questions on this one last time. So, I have some of the answers. So, this is an aerial easement requested by CenterPoint Energy. An easement is essentially above ground utilities. This is over at Anderson Elementary at the corner of Cypresswood and Lynn Gate. A couple of the questions that were asked are on this slide here. A little more clarity on the line itself that's coming in or that's proposed to be a part of the aerial easement. It is a distribution line as opposed to a transmission line. Transmission lines are heavier. They, the transmissions lines, transport electricity from the power plant and usually carry a higher voltage in those transmission lines. This is a distribution line. It's about 232 feet from the school and roughly 33 to 2,000, to 2 kilovolts will be carried on the line. And so, we have a proposal from CenterPoint for that aerial easement. It's about, encroaches onto our property by about 15 feet. And the purpose of it is for the line to not interfere with the traffic light that's at that corner.
I'll entertain a motion. It's getting late, guys.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the aerial easement between CenterPoint Energy, Houston Electric LLC, and Spring I S D at Anderson Elementary.
Do a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee McDaniel to approve the aerial easement between CenterPoint and Spring I S D at Anderson Elementary. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Chief Miranda that you went and found this out because I was very concerned about how much foliage is being carried on that line.
Just a quick question. It's an aerial easement and it's stating very, consisting of a variable number of wires and cables, but it says all necessary and desirable equipment and appurtenances. So, do we know?
Page are you on?
148. Herein and after referred to as facilities. So, are they going to have the ability to, I guess, build?
No, no facilities. Yeah, no. The aerial is only the power line.
Consistent of various numbers of wires and cables and all necessary and desirable equipment is referred to as facility. That was a good question because I don't think that reads clear.
If, if you look at the very bottom of that page, the easement actually begins at a, at a plane that is 16 feet above the ground and extending upward. And so, there, there is, there's no easement for anything on the ground or within 16 feet of the ground. It would all have to be above that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Abstentions? 6-4, one extension, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. So, our next item, oh my goodness, are the board's updates for our committees. The first committee is the Audit Committee. And I, we had our internal auditor give her update on Tuesday. So, I don't believe we have any updates today. We do not, thank you. Our next is our Board Governance Committee. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Deborah Jensen.
We met May 22nd and discussed policy updates from Tasby. We also are looking at Board of Trustees' policy concerning operating procedures. And our Chief Counsel gave us quite a file of different operating procedures in different districts that I'll hand over to the committee for discussion in our next meeting. We are still reviewing advocacy issues in the light of current legislative actions. And of course, with the post legislative meetings, that's going to keep going. Also, I requested a, not completely throwing out the Employee Excellence Awards by no means, but to redo our selection criteria and procedures that we discuss that. We also reviewed D C Local. And does anybody on the committee want to discuss any of the future governance issues that you wanted to see? I didn't have any notes on that. All right. And then, I guess we're done.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen, for that update. Our next item is the Board Equity Committee. And at this time, I'll ask Trustee Winford Adams to provide an update.
Thank you, President Durant. Well, we have struggled, the Equity Committee, to organize our schedules. We had a couple of postponements. We did finally meet yesterday, but still weren't able to have the full committee there. Ms. Westbrook's wasn't able to make it. Ms. McDaniel's wasn't able to make it. Those of us that did make it, we discussed a couple of issues. One being the upcoming summer professional development for our teachers in terms of the implicit bias training and the, the next stage of that training that Dr. Mendoza is going to be bringing forward. So, we're going to get an update on that coming up really soon. They're going to prepare sort of a sample for the board so that we can see, you know, what the next level. Because you'll recall that Dr. Mendoza did present that for us before she did the Level 2. So, that's in the works. The other thing we had an initial conversation about was it has been three years since we did our equity audit with Cambridge. And so, we've done a lot of work in that time. And so, probably not in the next budget cycle, but we need to start thinking about doing a follow-up audit to compare against our initial benchmark and to see where we've grown, where we still have some challenges. But, so that's what we discussed in our relatively brief meeting with not all of our, our folks there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Our next item is the Board Community Engagement Committee. And at this time, I'll ask Trustee Kelly P. Hodges to provide an update.
Good morning. The Community Engagement Committee, we, we did not meet last month. However, we were working on the, pulling together the information or the results from our Building Bridges and Table Talk. So, we, we, as you know, we hosted multiple sessions to connect with staff in the community. Could you pull up that information for me? So, and as you can imagine, we received a lot of feedback on various topics. And we recognize there's, you know, work to be done and to improve our district. And we've already started doing a lot of that work. So, we have these two, this infographic and the, another, we'll have two that kind of, under each topic, we bulleted those actions we've taken to address concerns. We also have a plan to implement further changes in the fall based on the feedback we receive from staff in the community. And so, we're committed to working with Dr. Hausser to ensure Spring I S D is the best place to learn, work, and grow. And this, these infographics will be placed on the website.
You all have copies in the Manella folder at your stations.
You want to see it a little closer, but the information will be posted to the website for the community and us, and staff to review what we've done. And so, we will start preparing for our events in the fall. We're going to have a focus as it relates to making sure our parents and our students are informed voters and getting them registered to vote. So, we'll be working, I think we're working on a collaboration with Rice University. They have a grant and a program where they're actually going out and actually doing the voter education. So, we're looking at partnering with them on that aspect of it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
These are great, so, great job.
Yes. Thank, thank Communications and Tramita and everyone who worked on getting this infographic. I think it really explains. And this is just clear and, you know, nice and clean. And I think if there are any questions from the community and staff when they look at it, I think all their questions will be answered. And we'll continue to bring these updates as we have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our next item is the Consent Agenda. And I'll now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all the items that are listed on the Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse, seconded by Trustee Adams, that we approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So, the Board of Trustees will now recess the open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 76, and 551.0821. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 11:46 P. M. We will now reconvene and resume the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 12:36 P. M. A. M. Do we have any items to address from the closed session?
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order to non-renew the contracts of Gregory Johnson and Sean Requelin Johnson as presented in closed session and authorize the superintendent designated to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa to render a final order on the non-renewal contracts for Gregory and Johnson and, what is it? Sherrekin? Johnson? Sherrekin. Sherrekin Johnson, as presented in closed session and authorize a superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board action to impact the employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other items?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees withdraw its May 9th, 2023 action to propose non-renewal of the term contract of Terrence Boggs to accept Mr. Boggs' resignation and to authorize a superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the board withdraw the May 9th action to propose non-renewal of the term contract for Terrence Boggs to accept Mr. Boggs' resignation and to authorize a superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Abstentions? 6-4, one extension. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that we adjourn to 9:40 P. M.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee McDaniel and seconded by Trustee McDaniel that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. The meeting adjourns this evening, this morning at 12:39 AM. Thank you all.